Meeting for Monday, June seventh, two thousand and twenty one. This is Select Board Chair Tom Okusa. I'll be confirming all members and persons anticipated on the agenda or present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steven Rantz.
Here.
Richard Foster.
Yeah.
Mark Gold.
Here.
And I've been informed by Mark Strange, he was unable to join this seat. And staff, when I call your name, if I'm posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely warmly, so long as reasonable public access is afforded. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Long Meadow Select Board is convening by Zoo Town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. For residents' comments, using Zoom webinar format, the public are attendees. And if members would like to speak during resident comments, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will unmute you and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Members in the public who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. As we move through, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or emotions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Remember to speak clearly in a way that will help generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait in order to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by. And we, the, the governor's agenda will be over on the fifteenth. And so we'll be saying this for the last time on the. We would now move into an update on COVID. And as the chief has been moved to a panelist.
Yes, he's here.
Okay, so we'll hear from Chief John Dearborn about the COVID update.
Uh, thank, thank you, Colonel Okusa. I'll be brief, I know you have a full agenda tonight. So as of June third, ten thousand three hundred and twenty-one Long Meadow residents have received at least one vaccination. Uh, we have one active case in town. We have seventy-one percent of the population has been vaccinated, but actually it's eighty percent of the eligible residents have actually been vaccinated. So from as far as vaccination is very good. Later on, in the town manager's report, uh, she will cover, um, the operations, the operations reopening. Uh, we've been moving, uh, forward fairly rapidly. On our things due list, we continue, we have one, one last fee reimbursement to submit. That's primarily, um, surrounds the vaccination program. That project has a, a, a expiration date. So although it's prepared, it can't say they've. As the chairman, um, mentioned, the state emergency Massachusetts will have June fifteenth. Later on in your agenda, uh, you'll have an opportunity to, um, repeal the emergency declaration for March sixteenth, twenty twenty. I would recommend to the board that they do so. Okay, that was, sure, concise enough. If you got any questions, I would certainly thank the chair.
Yes, do we have any questions? All right, so chief, uh, one of the things to look at is when we go back to having meetings at, at the high school, in the, uh, audio visual area, it will be on camera. Is there going to be any restrictions for members of the public who wanted to come in to those meetings, you know?
Yeah, if they're, uh, not, there, there should be some signage post similar to town hall. Um, if they're not vaccinated, the mask will be recommended as part of the advisory. Um, and others, um, will not be required now, so, um, the, the restrictions are limited. Are there missing anything there on that one, Lynn? You see the signs that we just made up every day, so.
No.
All right, great. So we'll have some more discussions aboard prior to our first meeting, I'm sure.
Any regarding, um, continued, um, in-person meetings and things, so there'll be more to come on that, so.
Oh, good, thank you. We've got some time.
Yeah.
All right, well, chief, uh, you did a great job all by yourself. You brought it down to one case. Uh, uh, that's great news. So does that put us in the gray category, I guess?
Uh, we're actually, yeah, non-designated at this point, so, um, so we're, we're done with the color chart. I just want to thank, um, uh, my entire team, uh, for all our hard work through this. A lot of people worked really hard, uh, and certainly thank the town manager for her support. Uh, I was glad ever, as a coach and mentor and partner through this whole thing, it was, uh, it was a lot of fun, so. All right, I'm lying about the fun part.
Do you want to do it again next, Jersey?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very kindly.
You, chief.
All right. Good evening, and, uh, so now we look at, um, we have some, uh, regular meeting announcements. Lynn, do you want to?
Yes, yep, I'll be quick. I see a bunch of hands, uh, for a resident comment, so. A reminder about the annual town election, it's Tuesday, June twenty-second. Voting will be at the community house. Polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. Currently, no excuse voting by mail has been extended by state law until June thirtieth. If you would like to do that, you need to, uh, file an application by, uh, June sixteenth, June sixteenth. Contact the town clerk's office at five six five four one zero three for more information on the town website. And, uh, for those of you, um, information on the town website. And, uh, for those of you, um, that didn't see the announcement that went out late last week, we have scheduled a grand opening celebration and ribbon cutting ceremony for the new DPW. Everyone is invited to attend. It will be Thursday, June twenty-fourth at two PM at the new facility at one seventy Dwight Road. If you do plan to attend, if you could just send an email to townmanager@longmeadow.org, so we can have a rough head count of how many may be there. And Greenwood Park Pool is scheduled to open on Wednesday, June sixteenth. Passes are available to purchase online now at www.lprd.net. And unfortunately, we did have significant problems trying to fill positions to allow us to operate both Bliss and Greenwood, and just Greenwood Pool will be opening this year. Just lost two more lifeguards, two other, uh, had to backfill those positions, so we definitely are running short this year. Uh, and just Greenwood will be open. It's unfortunate, um, but, uh, it will open next Wednesday. That's all I have for announcements tonight.
Well, thanks, Lynn, but the announcement said that this is a national shortage of, of lifeguards. I know other areas that have pools and ponds and lakes and oceans are horrifying. And generally what happens is you have a swim coach who does these courses for all of the students, either at the high school or college level, and they just weren't happening, obviously, because there's such a huge shortage. So, uh, we're lucky we have some folks to get started. Um, Mark Gold.
Yeah, just a quick question about that, Tom. You know, one of the things I've heard from people is that they, you know, there weren't the classes this year that there had been in the past because of COVID nineteen. I was wondering if the town was considering, you know, running and sponsoring Red Cross lifeguard classes, and then we would waive the fee for anybody who came to work for the town, and maybe we could open up a second pool, you know, for July and August, or maybe even just the month of August. But that might be something that Parks, Red Park might want to look into.
Then, do you think we could find some?
Yes, we, we did do that. Uh, we did reach out to the American Red Cross who runs the courses. Uh, we have not heard back from the master representative. There's just one person responsible for Massachusetts. Right now, courses are limited to ten people per class, it's the forty-hour-a-week course. And if we ran one course and had ten people in it, we would need all ten of those people to come work for us, and we would barely have enough to open, uh, the other pool. So it, it's a challenge, um, nationwide. There's an article in the Globe today about it. Beaches, lakes, ponds, it's unfortunate. We are a casualty of that, uh, but we are not alone in having that staffing issue.
Yeah, and the, um, and those classes generally have like twenty to twenty-five people in them, so, uh, it's going to take a while to catch up, so. All right, any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to, uh, resident comments. Lynn, do you have some folks?
Yes, so I'm just going to go down the list here of, um, who's in order, so I have Michelle Morantz. I will move in right now.
Michelle, uh, please state your name and your address when you're.
I just did, but I forgot to unmute. All right, here we go. Um, good evening, I'm Michelle Morantz, uh, one seventeen Rugby Road. As Chair of the Long Meadow Pipeline Group, I'm here tonight to inform the Select Board about Eversource's plan to build a gas expansion project in Long Meadow. After a long period of silence regarding its pipeline plans for Long Meadow, Eversource recently told me that they will move forward with the old Columbia gas plan to build a high-pressure pipeline starting at a proposed meter station on LCC property and ending in Springfield. The company will submit these plans to the Energy Facility Siding Board around August fifteenth. During the month preceding that submission, Eversource will reveal the chosen route and answer questions from the Long Meadow community. You may find it odd that I'm the one telling you this, but Eversource chose not to make this formal announcement now. Though they'd committed to speaking with community groups and leaders after the completed purchase of Columbia Gas, none of that interaction took place here. It was only through the initiative of our Pipeline Coalition that I was notified. You may also find it odd that with this expansion plan, Eversource has chosen to ignore the new climate bill mandating a fifty percent reduction in emissions by the year twenty thirty. Tell me how that goal is achieved by building a new pipeline with over three times the pressure of the current one. A bigger, more powerful pipeline certainly seems like gas expansion, as does building a meter station with five outbuildings, industrial lighting, security fencing, and an access road in a quiet neighborhood. I guess the answer is that Eversource apparently doesn't walk the talk. Recently, the company stated that they're, quote, actively building the clean energy future we all want and need, and we're looking at all solutions to achieve our region's clean energy goals, unquote. Expanding pipelines in Ashland, Westboro, Springfield, and Long Meadow just isn't a logical route to meeting those clean energy goals. Idiot moratorium on new gas projects that will only increase emissions and become stranded assets. And then there's the issue of safety. Recently, a Marshfield pipeline leak caused a fire that burned for ten hours, knocking out power and forcing evacuations. Eversource crew members were unable to find the shut-off valves, so the pipe was allowed to burn rather than risk exploding. If Eversource doesn't know where its shut-off valves are, how can its current, current pipeline network possibly be considered safe? And remember that the proposed Long Meadow pipeline would have over three times the pressure as the one in Marshfield. Obviously, Eversource's decision to launch the permitting process in August raises the same grave concerns we had when Columbia presented this plan years ago. This time around, we hope that the Select Board views the proposal as the threat it is to our towns and our regions' safety, health, and well-being. There simply is no need for this pipeline and the damage it will cause. Look at what East Hampton is about to pull off. Within the next two months, forty percent of the energy powering its municipal buildings will be stolen. Renewable energy is now economically viable. We have the technology, we just need the political will to make it happen. Let's join together and build to the future. Gas really is the past, and as a bridge tool, it's a bridge to nowhere. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next one with a hand raised is a phone number that I will move in. And you will just need to, um, unmute yourself and state your name and address.
This is Fred Rosenberg at forty Grassy Cutter Road, Long Meadow. I was sent a link to the meeting because I am applying to be on the Long Meadow Cable TV Advisory Board, and I was unable to get into the Zoom.
Okay.
So we will be interviewing people for that, uh, boards and committees, right up to resident comments. So don't go afar.
That's fine.
Okay, do we have any other residents?
Yes, oh, two more, um, that I see. Stephen Steiner is who I will move in next.
Okay. Mr. Steiner, if you could just, uh, give us your name and your address, sir.
And Mr. Steiner's also applying for boarding committee. I'm not sure if he had a comment as well, but.
Okay. Okay, we will move him back and move on. Next is Marie Angelidis.
And Marie, you'll just need to ring us with your address and. I think she knows the drill.
Here you are.
I'm sorry, I, the screen disappeared on me. Marie Angelidis, one ninety-nine Tango Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, Richard Foster is finishing his last term as a Select Board member, and I just wanted to thank him for his nine years of service. He's been an invaluable member of the Select Board. He always did his homework and spent hours preparing for meetings. He brought a lifetime of experience to the board. He was the chief of maintenance for the Federal Park Service in Washington DC. Richard emphasized the importance of professionalism and procedures for our departments. He never stopped advocating for high standards in the maintenance of our public areas and buildings. We have Richard to thank for our beautiful roads and sidewalks. Every year during the budget talks, he fought for us to invest in our pavements and roads. When he first came to the Select Board, our budget for sidewalk maintenance was so small, we were not even keeping up with simple repairs. Richard knew that dented guardrails and potholes were a sign of a larger problem. He worked diligently to improve our standards and put in programmatic maintenance and investment in our infrastructure. Richard took the fight from the Select Board to town meeting and to Beacon Hill. He never believed in wasting money, but he made sure that we invested in our future. The political fight for a new DPW has existed since nineteen forties. Richard helped make that happen. Every year, he made sure the project kept moving. Without his efforts, we'd still be talking about building a new DPW. Serving on a Select Board is an honor, but it's also a sacrifice and hard work. Thank you, Richard, for your years of service, sacrifice, and hard work. Richard, thank you. You made Long Meadow a better place. The Select Board's going to miss your professionalism and your wisdom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marie, that was.
Well, sitting next to you for nine years, it was a great honor, and, um, you really helped me along. There were some difficult times here in Long Meadow, and you were always willing to get there, get the work done, and get us over the hump. So thank you very much, Richard, for being such a great Select Board member and a good friend. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Marie.
All right, and our next, uh, comment?
Don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay, well, Marie.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more just popped up.
Hey, Marie did a good job of wrapping that.
And she's also applying for boarding committee.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay, so then we're, we're good to move on to the, uh, boards and committee interviews. And, um. So we will start, we have, um, the boards, you know, everyone has. So we'll start the interviews, and I would tend to do it in the order that, um, we have listed on our agenda. The first would be for the Community Preservation Committee. Uh, Mr. Peter Landon is applying for a term, a three-year term that ends in twenty twenty-four. Is Peter able to join us?
Yep, I just added him as, as a panelist.
Okay. So Peter, if you could start with just your, your name and address, and then, um, tell us why your interest in the Community Preservation Committee.
Uh, let's see. Good evening, um, basically, uh, Community Preservation Committee, uh, started in two thousand and six, and I looked at the last, um, sixty-nine grants since, uh, two thousand and fifteen. And, um, I think there's some opportunities to improve the effectiveness of these grants in terms of their ability to accomplish goals for the other entities within the town. Um, it's, uh, the town, I'd like to comment one thing beforehand is the state, uh, encouraged us to join with a hundred percent match on our one percent on community preservation uh, off of a surcharge, uh, based on the property tax. And that has systemically been lowered by the state to, this year is seventeen point seven percent. So typically, uh, a bait and switch, and you, you've seen this in other areas where the state, uh, for local communities, particularly ones, uh, in suburbia, uh, the, the matching grants, uh, go away. And, uh, it happened with, and, uh, in a big-time way. And it's, it's happened here with, uh, community preservation, and if this is not huge dollars on a part of the state, so this is, this is more deliberate than the fact that our, uh, local aid for education is paltry in comparison to standards, um, that I seem to be able to determine. Um, so with that cheery note about the states, uh, to suburban communities for community preservation, we're getting seventeen percent, as I said. When we passed it, we were offered one percent as a match. So the four hundred and seven thousand dollars that we got, instead of getting four hundred and seven thousand dollars from the state to match it, which would give us eight hundred thousand dollars to work with, uh, we got seventy-two thousand dollars from the state from according to Mr. Presurges' finance department figures. So, um, I basically, I'd love to be on this committee, I think, uh, looking at the opportunities to, uh, uh, looking at the sixty-nine grants since two thousand and fifteen, um, there's some opportunities to make these dollars. There's also an area that, the preservation itself, where you can become a catalyst for a program. You don't need to just sit back and take, uh, applications in a need that some of the departments have articulated. You can move proactively in that, in, in that sense, so, um, that's kind of a, uh, consideration that would be a policy of, of the town, whether it wanted to pursue that. We've given out about five to six million dollars in the seven year, in the since inception. Um, and, um, I think I'd like to work as a Select Board person, uh, one of the four at large in the Select Board points, to see if I can, uh, work to, uh, continue the program of the community preservation. Um, according to the, the bylaw.
Yeah.
If you, on community preservation, it indicates that there should be a person with a finance background of the, uh, uh, Select Board. And I have two terms under my belt so far with Finance Committee and two or three terms with Audit Committee. And, uh, so I think I need that qualification.
All right.
But, yeah, thank you. Hope you consider me.
That was good. It, it sounds like we're, we're in one of the meetings right now. That was very good, very. Your investigation, you're not just walking in blind. We know that. Uh, do we have any other questions from the Select Board? Mark Gold.
Peter, thanks for applying. Do, do you see yourself as, uh, uh, your role potentially in the, on the community preservation as a disruptor, or as a, just a promoter of the program, given the fact that, you know, you, you designated a bait and switch from the state kind of thing? There's a lot of money from, on the, was it?
I, I guess I don't appreciate being characterized as a disruptor, uh, because I mentioned the state, the state's policy towards, uh, matching funds. You know what? I, I attended that town meeting in two thousand and six, where the, there was no mention that this was going to be reduced to the match. And, uh, it, it's not huge dollars at the state level. Uh, these dollars come from the court system and, and, um, they're, they're, uh, incoming to the registry of deeds, uh, and they supplement from the state.
Okay, great.
So I don't know if I answered your question. I, I, I don't know how to answer.
Uh, you're fine, thank you.
If I'm a disruptor, I, I'm not going to be a instructor, no.
Nice. Well, it sounds like you're interested in the state, uh, be a, a weight in this anyways, so that's a.
Yeah, that, that, that won't happen, you know, we, we, it won't happen. You try it on an education, we've gotten, for ten years, the, uh, school system has gotten seven million dollars. And the city of Springfield has gone up by a hundred and fifty million dollars from, and, uh, that's, you know, all the money's going to the. and uh that's, all the money's going to the gateway cities. And that's why we're pushing on Prop two and a half. We're pushing on Prop two and a half because of state aid as much as we are on the fact that it it we don't have real estate values like they do in Eastern Mass.
Uh, Peter, we we need to go through a long list, but I will uh let you I'm gonna make a decision uh our next meeting. So uh thank you for your interest and uh
You're welcome.
And we'll move on.
Take care.
Okay.
That was good.
Yep. And next we have uh Robert Bayefsky for the Health, looking for reappointment to a three-year term that would end in uh twenty twenty-four.
Tom, I have one question. Uh, you have you have a public hearing scheduled at seven thirty for the beverage.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Um, so, Mr. Bayefsky, we'll be back to you. Um, let's move back to our main agenda. And you have um so we need to wait, so we'll start with this uh public hearing, the first person, do we need to open this hearing?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so can I get a motion to open a public hearing? Richard, do you want to forward that motion?
Some
Okay, in a second?
Second.
Okay, so we will be talking to three different um folks involved with their, talk about their liquor license, liquor LLC, an application for transfer of regional alcohol beverages. And so have them on the line.
As he is here. As he is here.
Yes, I have Jignesh Patel.
Okay, Mr. Patel, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So do you want to give us a brief description of this transfer?
Sorry?
Um, you're you're here seeking a transfer.
Yeah, transfer for four-season liquor license, yeah.
Yeah, and so it's transferring um from whom to whom?
Uh, Andre and Andre to Season Liquor LLC.
Okay, and uh all of our, all the information here seems to be in order. Um, okay, the transfer, Andre, any questions for members of the board on this transfer? Mark Gold.
I I don't have a question, but I think we need to take this, you know, impress on Mr. Patel as a as as a new Long Meadow potential liquor vendor in Long Meadow, the seriousness with which we take the our liquor licenses, our enforcement of uh liquor sales to to people only of of legal age, twenty-one or over. Your establishment that you're looking to purchase is probably yards, you know, several hundred yards from high school. And we we're particularly concerned, at least I'm particularly concerned about that, and and not men making this as a threat, just as a comment. I hope your Andre family has expressed to you that Long Meadow does and will continue to frequently run checks on liquor license violators. Uh, require that people have some level of safe serve or uh some other training to how to require that they check on underage uh purchasers of alcoholic beverages. And we're going to do the same for you, and although I didn't see it in the packet, I'm gonna make our approval of this transfer contingent upon you to have passed the the safe serve or, you know, requirements that we've required of everybody else. But other than that, I wanna welcome you to Long Meadow and certainly wish you the best of luck in yours.
Yeah, thank you, and we follow all the rules. Don't worry, sir. We have like the ID scanning machines and everything, so we take care for that. Thank you for that, yeah, thanks, sir.
Right, and to just piggyback on that, Mr. Patel, um the other thing is serving individuals who are already intoxicated, taking more alcohol. And that's, again, you know, we count on on uh anyone who sells alcohol in our town, that they recognize when people may be unsafe driving, that they they show up um to purchase alcohol in a drunken state, and so that's another, you know, very
Yeah, definitely, it's the law. If anybody drunk, so we cannot serve them.
Yeah, and they are not gonna be happy about it. They're gonna be very unhappy when you say you can't sell them anything, but
Yeah, but it's the law, so.
We really do count on you, and so uh, you know, we're glad you've uh come to Long Meadow.
Yeah, please.
Steve Rance or Stephen?
So this is nothing more than a uh a sale of a business. And along with the business goes the liquor license, is that basically what's happening?
Right, we have to transfer the liquor license to one person.
It's just, uh, I think it's a trade
Thank you very much, sir, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so um and and Mike Barbieri, who pulled this together, all the materials that were required for the transfer have been um submitted?
Yep, they've been they've been reviewed, they're just awaiting uh select board approval.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for joining us. Uh, we will move on to the next applicant, which is the uh Long Meadow Country Club, is looking to amend their liquor license. And so
I believe, I believe we need a motion to
No, we don't do that in this inside the hearing, we have to close the hearing.
Close the hearing first, yeah.
Okay, thanks for checking, Mike. Um, so we have the uh Long Meadow Country Club, and I don't know if we have is that the person is uh
The public hearing is scheduled for seven forty-five.
Okay, oh, I am early, all right, so um
What we can do is we can do a one more boarding committee interview in between, if that works.
Sorry, just for my clarification, are you going to take public comment as part of the public hearing? Is there anyone that wants to speak to that transfer?
We would, yes, um, thank you. Is anyone identified as wanting to make part?
There's two hands raised, and it's not, I'm not clear on if they want to do this or not, so I can move them in or Mike can?
Yeah, I could touch upon that. So Kathy Mullins' hand is raised, I'm assuming for um boarding committee interviews, and Kathleen Breck is a representative from Long Meadow Country Club for the next hearing.
Okay. So, do we need to close? Or should we, no, we'll just keep the hearing open for all three of these, Mark, and then we'll
Yeah, well, and and I mean Kathleen Breck is here, if she waves the time, we can move we can move her in and start.
Yeah, I'd like to, that'd be my preference also. Does she uh, if you could just let her know?
All right, I'm moving in Kath- Kathleen now.
Good evening.
Uh, so, uh, we are just wanted you, if you could just give us a heads up on the amendment, amendment?
Absolutely, thank you very much and good evening, members of the select board. My name is Kathleen Breck. I am a member of the Board of Governors at the Long Meadow Country Club, and I'm pleased to present this to you first consideration tonight. We are requesting an application for alteration of the premises to include a beverage cart to service the golf course. Currently, our liquor license is limited to the clubhouse, and we are hoping to have um permission both from the town and also the ABCC for the alteration of the premises, so that um the licensed premises cover the entire golf course um to be used. Um, primarily from, if you don't mind my just giving a short spiel, primarily between the hours of eleven and seven, eleven AM to seven PM, mostly Tuesday through Sunday. Uh, occasionally, if there was an outside event on a Monday. Um, and uh, things that would be on the cart would be things like beer, gatorade, water, perhaps wine, I'm not sure, the wine that comes in those little containers, snacks, things of that nature. Um, and we would have a uh uh a certified person who was qualified as a bartender operating the uh the beer cart. Um, the, our current liquor license, I believe, the service hours from eleven AM to eleven PM. Um, obviously, we wouldn't need those later at night once it's dark. Um, are there any factual questions about our application?
I think that everything looks in order. I I guess the only question is, for me, is what's taking you so long?
That's an excellent, that's an excellent question. Some of, some of our members are, you know, what's a beverage cart, so it took us a little while, but we're here. Oh, I just also wanted to mention the um because of uh the public way intersecting the golf course, um, also as part of our application, we're asking for the transportation permit as well in order to allow the cart to cross the public way with the alcoholic beverages on board.
Okay, but uh, yeah, so it it today would have been a great day to have one of those Miranda has a question or comment?
Uh, I have another question, so since unfortunately for the golf course, you're bifurcated by Shaker Road. Since this golf, uh, this beverage cart has to cross the road, I'm assuming that in addition to stopping for the golf course, we also stop traffic as the beverage cart crosses the road. Correct?
I, I, yes, absolutely. The uh operator would have to be very careful to make sure that um, traffic is not coming in either direction. We recently were having a flashing light installed that someone was activating the flashing light to cross at the crosswalk.
Okay, so the and the residents of whoever's going back and forth on Shaker Road will have to wait so alcoholic beverages can be delivered across the street. I'm just wondering why, since the street is an issue, why this could not just be um the clubhouse side of the street, which I believe has tunnels uh on it, that, you know, to cross the street, there's enough traffic issues on Shaker Road as it is, I'm just wondering why we need to have this happen across the street.
Well, because nine of our, nine of the holes of the golf course, just about half of the golf course, is on the opposite, so better serve our members by having the golf, the beverage cart operate. And the way it was explained to me by our staff of how it would work is they would basically go in a loop, so we'll cross the street, do the nine holes across the way, then come back and do it on the club side, and then you know, just go in a continuous loop. It wouldn't be used every day.
Okay, one one last thing about the traffic issue. Um, given that I sense a lot of golf is played when school's not in session, but it's but between, you know, April, May, middle of June, September, October, as well as, that's a fairly congested area as school gets out. Which I assume, since it's mid-afternoon, I guess the beer folks really want their beer, it just, it just seems to me that crossing that street at that time uh to serve alcoholic beverages may not be um exactly what we want to be doing at that time. Uh, I, as I said, I think that, given that actually the majority of holes are on the outside of the street, you know, I, the fact that, you know, I assume you have water on that side of the golf course, where, you know, if I'm playing golf and I need to get a drink of water, I've got some sort of container that I can just get water out of, which I think is the most important thing for, as opposed to alcohol. Um, this is my question.
Thank you.
Uh, Mark Gold.
Yeah, Kathleen, thanks for coming for us. Question I have is what what particular actions are you taking to assure the compliance with our underage sales requirements? Do, I know you said bartender on the, but is there gonna be any particular training? I mean, you know, it's generally out in the course, there's, you know, some eighteen-year-old people, nineteen-year-olds playing with somebody who's older, and how are we gonna, how are you going to get drinking sales, and how are we gonna assure that you're enforcing that?
Well, I would um, I would anticipate that our staff would be checking um for the most part because it's um, it's a member service club. Um, we're not exchanging cash, but the members, the uh, the staff person has to know the member's name and their I, their member ID to be able to charge their account. And if the staff person was not familiar with the member, they would have to ask for identification to show proof of age.
Okay, but there's, I mean, my concern is that that's even more reason why, you know, somebody just says number eight twenty-seven, and, you know, they don't really care whether it's a nineteen-year-old or the nineteen-year-old child of a member, or it's the member themselves, they've got the number, and they're they're ready to go. That's why I'm saying that that into a a a bar, and so I think special special precautions or actions need to be considered, special training, whatever it is, I'm very concerned about this.
That's an excellent point. I'll make sure to um uh make a point of that. Um, to make sure that the operators of the cart are checking identification, even if it, you know, even if it's a member, if it's um, obviously someone my age, they're not gonna check my ID, but certainly someone that's um even, you know, peers even mildly close, um, they would have to be checking IDs for that.
I mean, I think state law says if you're up to thirty or thirty-five years old, they're supposed to check IDs.
Well, I'm thirty, okay.
No, but but, I mean, that's
No, I'm kidding.
There's not a
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's a problem with
I'm not a bartender, I, um, but yeah, the staff would be required to comply with all those restrictions.
Thank you.
Okay, and any other questions or comments? All right, um, well, it sounds good, and and Kathleen will be voting on this. We should, so, thank you for, and we'll move on to the next uh
Thank you.
Yep, and the next group, if they're ready, it is Long Meadow Hospitality, um, LCC, doing business as a meeting house, an application for amendment of the liquor license. If they can give us their presentation, I believe they're looking to
Hey, Mr. Lic, I I don't believe we were able to waive the hearing time. Um, if it's at eight PM, pretty sure that we have to start with a different item of business, and then go back to that at eight PM.
Okay, so at least the the last one we did, uh, it's now seven forty-seven, so we did it in the seven forty-five time slot.
Tom, you should ask if there's any public comment about Long Meadow Country Club
Yeah. Okay, any public comment on Long Meadow Country Club's application to amend serving liquor and uh golf. Okay, hearing done, great. So we have fifteen, you know, like ten minutes, so maybe we will go back to the uh our list of folks who are seeking to be on committees. And the uh, we have a
I'm gonna move uh Bob Abeski in now.
Okay, great. So Bob, if you could please, uh, or Robert?
You got you?
Just your name and then send your interest in the board of health?
Sure, Robert Bayefsky, one thirty-four Tanglewood Drive. Um, I'm a physician down at Bay State in the emergency department, and I've had the pleasure of being on the board of health for fifteen years. Um, I'm currently serving in the role as chair on the board. I was moved into that position, as you may be aware. We had an implosion on the board, and we lost several members, including the director. Um, and we're also short a town nurse. So we have rebuilt the board, and we're moving forward. Uh, we had the COVID ride of this past year with a lot of uh issues that were brought before the board, and that's been rather exciting, working with um Lynn and Chief Dearborn on those various issues and the school department and um, the whole town in general with managing through that uh pandemic. And although everyone's cheering now, let's just hope it stays that way. Um, we're looking forward, as we move forward into uh shared services with the surrounding communities, getting back to some more routine items on the board, uh vaccination programs and uh inspections and just in general, working with uh Finn McPoole, the new director, and moving forward with the uh topics that the board is uh used to dealing with.
All right, Robert, sounds like you're on top of the the tasks. And uh, yes, there is some exciting things that are happening in the future as far as um connecting with other communities, and so it's nice to have some of your experience uh re- applying for um, you know, reappointments. Uh, any questions from the board? Uh, Steve Rance?
Uh, yes, I I'm very happy you're applying. I I have a question in terms of what happened when we get to extraordinary circumstances like COVID. Um, I understand, and it's really quite depressing, that the state, the state gave no guidance as time went on, and we had at our June twenty twenty town meeting, it was a real question, should we have it, should we not have it? at our June twenty twenty town meeting, it was a real question, should we have it, should we not have it? Uh, and the Board of Health, our Board of Health, really came up with no answer. And I, I understand that they had no guidance, you guys had no guidance from the state. But we were looking for guidance, at least locally, and in terms of how you view that, how you view the responsibility of the Board of Health, in terms of guiding the community, since you guys are the experts, um, in terms of having that happen again, you know, how, how, you know, and hopefully it will not. You know, who knows? Um, do you have any comments about what happened then and what happened, you know, what you guys might be able to do in the future?
Yeah, um, I'll challenge you directly and say that the state did give guidance and in fact, the Board of Health followed almost to a T the state guidance at all levels of, um, the pandemic when it came time to making decisions. Um, we did not establish our own unenforceable regulations. And we in fact followed as best we could CDC guidelines and state guidelines for, um, town meetings, for graduations, for any of the big events and for, uh, the use of the town facilities. So, um, I would say that we did a fairly good job of, of holding to those types of regulations. It's not possible to come up with our own regulations and think that we can actually enforce them. So we were using best science at the time and we have very knowledgeable people on the board that were making these decisions. And, and when specific decisions were required, I thought that those were made, um, in as timely a fashion and as appropriate as possible.
Okay, any other questions? Steve, I know that the big decision that we made last year was the Halloween decision and, uh, then the board did make a stand, take a standing on that, uh, as, you know, saying that we should not have Halloween happen in our town. Any other questions for, uh, Robert? Okay, well, Robert, thank you, um, and we will get back to you, uh, you know, after we vote on this to our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening. And so next, we have, uh, time for Gerald Duquette, uh, historical commission in parks and recreation, a new appointment. And, uh, I know Gerald would say, gee, you're giving me, you know, seven minutes. I don't know if it's gonna be enough, but maybe, you know, here we, uh, Gerald, can you, uh, start with your name and your address?
Uh, you're muted.
Gerald Duquette, sixty-nine Claremont Street. That work?
Yes, works good, Gerald. Nice to hear your voice. Uh, so you're interested in a new appointment here, huh?
Yes, that's, that's the word on the street.
So what is your, uh, interest in the historical commission parks and recreation?
Well, let me just quickly, uh, point out that I, I, um, I responded to a call for volunteers for committees and I listed several. Uh, I called, uh, the administrative assistant to find out what I was being interviewed for. He told me these two committees. Uh, I'm actually really only gonna have time for one of them, uh, so, uh, my preference of the two would be the park board, but obviously if the, uh, board would rather, uh, see me on the historical commission, I'd be, I'd be fine with that. So ultimately, the answer to why am I interested in these boards? Well, I'm interested in getting more involved, getting back involved in, uh, in sort of local town discussions and community activity. Uh, my, my third, uh, of four children has just finished high school and my, uh, my coaching load is down significantly. Uh, and that, uh, leads me to have some time to fill in other roles, particularly the park board. I know pretty much everybody in town, all the different associations, and I've been coaching most of the sports for the last fifteen years. So that, that's probably the one that I'm more, uh, sort of directly involved with.
All right, so it's a, it's, so it's a trade-off from volunteering in one way with as a coach to volunteering in another way with the board.
Sure.
Thank you for stepping forward. Uh, do we have any questions from the board? Uh, Mark Gold?
Gerald, thanks for applying. I'm gonna focus on the reports. That's where your interest is, is, and certainly you always use help on the board. You know, do you consider yourself a, what I'll call is a, 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 a single sport or a focused sport advocate? You know, we have people apply for the park board who say, no, I'm in it for, you know, pick your sport, boys lacrosse or girls lacrosse or soccer or something like that. Uh, do you, do you see a, a focus that you're mostly interested in? The other thing is, if, if you had a, a, a preference of your, you know, where you'd like to be active in this, is it in programs or is it in facilities?
That's an interesting, the second one is interesting. The first one is sort of the perennial debate about one sport versus multi-sports. My kids have all been, their favorite sport has been the sport of the season. And that is the way I look at it. I don't, I, none of my kids specialize in a sport. They all play whatever sport is, uh, there for the season. And I certainly don't have a particular preference. And looking around with people that are involved in those sports, we claim, you know, those shouldn't be in the town. But the reality is, we're very proud to have a lot of different sports and the town takes a great deal of pride in its sports. And it's actually, sometimes the politics of youth sports is nastier than what you might call real politics. So it's actually pretty important that we not have that sort of focus on a single sport. It's actually very important.
Wolfswan Field is case number one.
Right.
Cardinal baseball, Wolfswan Field. Go ahead.
Well, I think the, the final determination at Wolfswan Field, which included three baseball fields, was a good compromise. Uh, it was a compromised brokered, uh, initially by our former state representative at the town meetings, who stood up right in front of me to make that, to make that suggestion, which I thought was excellent.
Part two, though, was the facilities versus, versus.
I think I'm more interested in programs, to be honest with you. I, you know, uh, I don't have any aversion to, uh, listening to and thinking through, uh, facilities issues certainly. But I think about, uh, you know, uh, as a little league dad and also as an L B A dad at other times and coach, et cetera. I think it's actually important that we try to, uh, have members of the board who have experience on multiple sports and associations to try to make sure the relationship between those associations is amicable. I think that's an important part of the job.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Gerald. If there's no other questions, we'll just, um, get back to you, uh, at our next meeting in two weeks and we'll make a vote on that, all right?
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you. Take care. So we are closing in, seven fifty-eight. I tend to think, I don't know if we can, I guess we'll just start the hearing. I, is Robert Humerson available for reappointment, um?
Yeah, he's here. We'll just, um, we don't wanna cut him, we only have two minutes. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll add, uh, Lou Masachi in right now and vote the meeting for the, for the, for the hearing.
And, uh. Okay, so, uh, this is Long Meadow Hospitality LLC, the meeting house is looking for amendment to their liquor license. And, uh. And so who, who do we have with us? Is it?
Yep, I believe we have Lou and, uh, Jeanette.
Lou and Jeanette, yep.
Okay, well, good evening. Thank you for joining us, um, and so what, uh, you're making this adjustment? Do you wanna explain it to the board?
Uh, yeah, very simple. We were, uh, before you, I think about five weeks ago, as well as last summer, um, we took advantage of Governor Baker's emergency use order to extend, uh, the serving of alcohol on outdoor spaces. Uh, that is set to expire this weekend, I believe. I believe it's the thirteenth. Um, and we'd obviously just like to make that permanent. Our patio has been there for the last, uh, three years. Uh, we've been using it and we just like to be able to make this a permanent, uh, addition to our current liquor license, to be able to serve alcohol on the existing patio.
Okay, well, thank you for, uh, coming forward. And do we have any, um, questions from board members? Mark Gold? You're still muted, Mark. It's unmuted, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. It's, it's not so much a question as, as a comment or observation. Your application says that the hours that you're looking to provide service on the patio and they aren't consistent with the liquor license itself, specifically Sunday, it says seven thirty A M to ten thirty P M. And my understanding is the liquor license, when we gave it, because there was a lot of discussion about that, was Sunday, it started at noon. Uh, and, and so I just wanna make sure that we're all consistent across the, the different documents so that we're not extending hours. I mean, I, I'm, you know, I, I think it's a great idea, get you on the patio, it's, make it permanent. I just want the liquor license hours to be consistent that we've approved already for the inside of the building.
Yeah, that, 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 that's a typo on our part.
It's fine, I just wanted to point it out, that's all.
I just wanted to point out right now, right now, we're not even open on Sundays, but we intend to amend that, uh, in August. Uh, so, so thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
But so then, um, you know, when we, we vote on this, we'll have to take that into consideration and Mike, if you could make note of that. Um, a- any other questions? No? Okay, well, I can, it's, uh, it's nice to see people outside and, um.
Certainly is.
And it's a, um.
Nice to see people, period.
Yeah, right, I know. I know at one point, there were some, uh, other folks in that complex who were wondering how that was gonna work. I haven't heard anybody complaining about it and, uh, I, I think it looks good, uh, from what I've seen, but, uh, thanks for your application.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
We've heard from all the parties involved. Maybe we can, uh, close the hearing? We have a motion?
Need, uh, is there any public comment on the meeting house?
Any public comment on, uh, this change from the meeting house's application?
I don't see any at the moment.
Okay. Hearing done, um, I'd ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Second, okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Mike Barbieri?
Solikusa?
Yes.
Mr. Maritz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right, so we are gonna look for motions to approve. Do we have to each one individually? Can we do all three at the? Probably, but we're looking for a motion to cease this LLC liquor license application transfer of, uh, retail alcohol beverage license for sales. We got a motion?
I'll, I'll move we approve the transfer of the season's liquor license from Andre and Andre to Janesh Patel. With this, with all the terms and conditions that were existing before, dependent, uh, or contingent upon Mr. Patel's providing us safe server equivalent.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll go to the room.
Uh, you're, you, you also need to include a sixteen C finding. That, uh, it's within five hundred feet of a church, school, synagogue or hospital, so you have to find no detriment to the, uh, extension of the license.
Okay.
Um, Mike, did you have that language handy?
Give me one second.
And the, uh, you know, the location is not changed, uh, from what was approved prior?
Right, it's.
Like, yeah, I know, so we're just amend, will we add this to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion for the transfer and then we would add this section to that amendment, which is. Is someone gonna read it?
Give me one second, I'm pulling up, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, they're gonna think, everyone's changing the stations now. We, we.
So, um, you can, you can just amend the motion to say, uh, pursuant to.
I got, I agree.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so, yeah, um, um, under the provisions of section sixteen C, an affidavit of the applicant or the person mailing such a notice on the behalf, together with a contested copy of the notice mailed, should be filed in the office of the local licensing companies, and certain copies of such affidavits shall be prima ev- evidence that such notice has been mailed to a, or hospital within five hundred feet of.
Okay, is that, is that documented or back? Mike?
I believe that was for, included in the butters, but was that, had to do with the butters notification, um, Lynn?
Yeah, those, any church, school, synagogue or hospital within five hundred feet would have gotten a notice.
Right, but our requirement to include that, that note, that wording wasn't in the document with Steve, was it?
Right, so you just have to, when you make the motion, you just have to move that you find no detrimental impact to the operation of any church, school, synagogue or hospital within five hundred feet. It's just a vote that you would take as part of this. And then Mike will prepare the sixteen C finding to go with the application.
Okay. Motion has been seconded. We'll do a roll call vote for approval of the transfer. Um, Mike Barbieri, will you? Well, actually, we suggest a motion. Could someone second that?
Second.
All right, so, thank you.
It's Solikusa?
Yes.
Sir Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the Long Meadow Country Club application to amend the liquor license. Gonna get a motion for that? And we, it's within five hundred yards of Wolfswan School, right? Or?
No, it's actually, it's actually not.
It's not? Oh, good. Just a regular motion?
Um, would Country Club include a, a beverage cart with the hours of operation to be the same as the hours of operation of their general liquor license?
I would amend that to include the same language, people driving a car, making sure they undergo whatever training that, uh, we're supposed to undergo.
I'll, I'll accept that.
And then, and then you'll second that? Stephen?
Yes, uh, this is assuming, I don't know, Country Club, you know, provides a documentation that they've done, this is from the parties, just like the other place.
Good, and, uh, hearing done, we'll move on. We'll move on to a vote, um.
Mr. Gold? Mr. Foster?
Yes.
For the Long Meadow Hospitality LLC, uh, two businesses.
I'll, I'll move the lease and the liquor license for Long Meadow.
This could camaraderie and I would like to continue on for another, uh, term.
Okay, was there anything that happened, uh, in this past term that you found, you know, excited about being part of?
Well, I'm referring to now, uh, to a memo issued by Lynn Simmons. And she indicated that when we were looking at the, uh, the, uh, Biden's street, uh, sweeper, she made a very good point, which I would like to explore also. She said, let's explore the course of contracting his service out and providing a cost comparison of owning, operating and maintaining his vehicle. And I think that's a more modern approach and I would like to be involved with that.
Okay. Great, I agree. Thank you. Uh, any questions from, uh, Mark Gold has a question?
Thanks for, for applying for the job. Just a quick comment about street sweeping. When I was on the capital planning committee, we did the same analysis. One of the things, at the end of the spring, it got, got ridiculous, but that's beside the point. I guess my, my real question to you was going to be about the, the, the committee as a whole. The, the capital planning committee's been quite stable the last couple of years and we have a lot to, to think. The concern is that, that what I was looking for is the, was, of leadership. Uh, you know, not that, that I don't think Dr. Metz is doing a great job, I just think it's, you know, a good idea for getting in the, in, in the capital planning committee. Is that something you'd consider if we were to take on that, uh, that track of requiring leaders to rotate every few years?
I would consider that, yes. I'm not adverse to that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, and Steve Marantz, your question?
Uh, yes, my question was in terms of anything specifically from a project that you would really like that hasn't been done, that you think really should move to the front of the law school town.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
I think that would be near and dear to your heart that you would like to bring to the committee saying, this is what I want to see is put money into. Um that hasn't happened, but that you think is necessary for a long metal.
Nothing comes to mind right now. Everything I I would stay with that framework. When when I was uh as a member of the committee, I proposed something. I'm not looking at self-aggrandizing or regging, but I think it's important. I proposed it was accepted that we have this criteria. Is it mandatory, third, efficiency, and fourth aesthetics? And that's the framework I I would apply to. And I would also possibly would possibly uh consider uh say, and it continues talent, it'd be more efficient. So those are things I we should consider. Um I'm referring more to a general than a specific uh uh project, a general approach as opposed to a specific project. And the general approach eventually could lead to a uh specific application.
Okay, so that's your question, Steve?
Yes.
All right. Any further questions? Uh he hearing none. Uh Ira, thank you for uh stepping up and we'll let you know in a couple of weeks, all right?
Okay, thank you.
And now we have Marie uh George Fields, the Cultural Council and the Energy Sustainable Committee. Uh new appointment. Three-year terms. Marie, with
Hi, my name is Marie George Fields. Um I live in one seventy-four Maple Road in Long Meadow. I'm applying for the Cultural um Committee. Um and just like Jericho, I believe, I put two. Uh my preference would be the Cultural Committee. That's what I'm passionate about. Um uh I've I've had a his, I'm, well, I should say I'm an artist first. Um I've done uh cultural programming for uh Pittsfield Public School and Richmond School. Um I have, I'm a musician myself. Um and then I also work for the government, which is a weird mix. Uh so I'm multifaceted in a way. Um so I like policy and I like art. So um I, when this uh said, because I was looking at some activities to do to kind of like enrich my life in Long Meadow. And I said, this is something that I can definitely get into because um I didn't see a lot of things and I think I can bring a lot to the table to kind of like diversify the actual committee and also diversify what we bring into the um for artists and and what we consider culture um towards Long Meadow, so.
Sounds good. And so earlier we had Robert uh Hubbardston talk about you know, a potential activity that could happen in the library. And is that seem like the kind of thing you want to be doing?
Yeah, I've actually performed in libraries before, music and dance. So um that's perfectly fine. Actually, art can be done in many different places, including outside, indoors. You'd be surprised what you could do. Um so, yeah, I think it's a great idea concerning acoustics and um the evolution of COVID nineteen um and how there's been many events happening in in libraries. And actually, it's quaint, it's intimate. I think you get really close with the artists as well. Um and also for parents, um it's also low hanging fruit. And it's good advertisement too, because the library helps promote it as well. But that's neither near nor there.
Oh, that's that's good. Okay, thank you. Uh any other questions, Marko?
Uh George Fields, thank you for volunteering for this. I'd just make a comment that that uh the Cultural Council has traditionally been uh I was gonna say underfunded, but I think it's zero funded pretty much from the from the town. And I encourage people who are passionate about the things in the town to come after the the town as much as our budget is always amper to for funds, not just rely on the money that we get from the state Cultural Council. That is the primary for Cultural Council. So just a plea for funding, my encouragement for that.
Okay. Any other questions, Carlos? Okay, well, um Marie, thank you. And we'll let you know in a couple of weeks, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
And we have Stephen Steiner, interested in the tree committee reappointment, a three-year term. And moves Mr. Steiner into the queue here and he could start with giving us his name and address and.
Yep, he should be in there now.
I see him. Um he's still muted.
Doctor Steiner's on mute.
Still muted.
How about this? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay. Um I'm Stephen Steiner, eighty-two Williamsburg Drive. Um I'm applying to be on the uh tree committee. Um I have been on the tree committee for one term. Um I think we do good work in the uh in the town. Uh I I like trees. Um I read about trees and uh um I think we've uh been adding trees to the uh to the right of ways uh in town uh in recent years. And I think it helps beautify the town. Um they've been getting more interesting kinds of trees to put in on town uh as well. Um.
Well, that's good. Or have you, do you freeze off a little bit?
No, I'm, I I have not.
I'm Don Holland, forty-three Southern Ridge Road. I'm seeking reappointment to the committee. Served on it for about twelve years. Enjoy doing so. We accomplish a lot. The committee works on the license agreement with Comcast for the town. I'm delighted to work on the one that was um the one that uh is is current. Done about ten years ago and working on the current negotiations for the next license agreement. Steve Womack does a good job on the committee and I think the rest of the committee members with their technical expertise uh do a good job too. I'd like to continue in that capacity.
Okay, great. Run, are they ten years long, general?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Tom.
So that's what we're working on now. Um.
Ready for it?
Yeah, Don, thanks. Thanks. I think first of all, I think you need to point out that you're not negotiating rates. That's beyond your your view to negotiate rates. Talk to us about when you're negotiating the contract. So I think people need to do that. But my question though really is we we sent you off on another task this year to talk about uh wireless and and high-speed internet for alternative for people in town. Is there going to be a report back to the select board at some point on that uh task?
There will be.
Yeah, I should.
We've been in touch with I believe, two towns that use wireless. A third town, if if uh my memory serves me right, had wireless and stopped using it because it was too expensive. And so um I think that you're not going to get a report for at least a few months.
Oh, I'd say I thought I had something for the twenty-first of June. Lynn, do you wanna confirm that?
I have not received anything in writing yet, but the board uh had asked for something by the end of the fiscal year. June twenty-first is your last meeting, so we have it as a placeholder there.
Yeah, all right. So uh so Don, you know, we're, I guess we're hoping uh that something could be happening by the end of the fiscal year. Um but appreciate you doing the research. I know that like the town of um is is moving forward on that also. As cool as, you know, people write on our borders. Um any other questions, Mr. Al? Okay, well, we appreciate your work and your commitment and thank you for looking for the appointment. We will get back to you in two weeks.
Thank you.
We'll vote, yep. And uh next we have David Miller. From the Energy and Sustainability Committee, a reappointment. And we have Mr. Miller. You could start with your name and your address. You're still muted? And now you're not. Mr. Miller? Can you hear us? Um maybe your speaker is low or something?
How about now?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Perfect.
All right. So.
Uh David Miller, sixty-eight East Greenwich Road. Uh I'm applying to be on the Energy and Sustainability Committee, uh one that I've been on since its inception, uh probably about six years ago. Um I'm looking forward to a lot of interesting discussion and decisions that we have to make. Very interested in the approach to the town to get solar panels on the roofs of some of our buildings. Um and I also, uh as you may remember, we did all both electrical and fuel consumption over the course of the past couple of years. And as soon as we can get to the point where we can get some reliable data for comparison, we'd like to see whether we actually have made some improvements uh as a consequence of that work and expenditure. So those are two areas that I'm particularly interested in moving forward with.
Great. So uh earlier in the meeting tonight, comments were made by um Michelle Marantz, actually saying that the town of East Hampton is forty percent of their municipal buildings uh are getting uh solar power, or forty percent of their use of solar power. I don't, I don't think they did it. Because people like.
I'm not sure. I I have no idea. Uh as you know, this has been an ongoing and difficult problem. Um and a major issue is how you are going to apportion the value of putting in the solar. Uh in other words, do does the town want to take on the project themselves? Or do you simply want to lease space on a building roof? And then the question is which roofs are available? Obviously, roofs that would be of particular interest are the high school, uh the neat new DPW yard and uh the uh new senior center. And uh those are all buildings that I think we should look at very carefully and pursue.
Yeah. Do you think it's state regulations that get in the way? Like, would we be better off in a state like Connecticut?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Uh Marko?
And Dr. Miller, I have a couple of questions. Uh thank you for for continuing your work here. Uh just make a comment. I've gotten pretty adept at reading ever sourced uh invoices to the town, the the monthly bills to the town in the streetlight stuff. So if you want a quick course in trying to track how the buildings are doing, I might be able to help you help you out. But the other thing I want to talk to you about is one of the projects that I thought was on your list was the sewer pumping station, something changing them from AC motors to DC motors as major energy savings. Is that still on your radar list?
Well, I did a little research in that regard. Uh it turns out that a DC motor, as you probably know, is quite expensive. Uh uh roughly four to five times the cost of an AC motor. Uh the second point is that the town actually has done a pretty good job of maintaining their motors and keeping them reasonably efficient. Uh one of the problems is that the, one of the motors that we might consider replacing would be the uh the one that pumps water, uh regular wa- water from Springfield. The difficulty is that that only works uh at certain times when there's high demand, such as in the summertime when we need to pump a lot of water to irrigate uh the community's yards and to some extent the town, well, not to the town's uh facilities, because those are, I believe, maintained by well water. But the problem is that you'd be spending a lot of money for a pump that might be only used six or eight hours uh every couple of weeks or so. And so that seemed like it was not at this point uh something worth pursuing.
Thank you. We'll we'll talk some more about the sewer pump going to Bondi's Islands later. Thank you, though, Dr. Miller.
Yep. All right. And the other questions? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Miller, thank you for uh stepping up and we'll let you know in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
And we can move to Fred Rosenberg, who tried to do this earlier. He's looking for a spot on the cable advisory committee. To be appointed. And uh Mr. Rosenberg.
Hi, this is Fred Rosenberg. I live at Forty Grass You Got a Road in Long Meadow. Um I'm seeking reappointment to the cable committee. I have been on the uh cable advisory board for the past three years. The primary reason I originally joined was my interest in net neutrality and left pulling the playing field for access. Currently, with the COVID crisis, I find it distressing that Comcast wants to cap data usage, possibly increasing data rates to those whose families depend heavily on Zoom. I was a broadcast engineer many years ago at WWLP and ESPN. I'm still in touch with the chief engineer at WWLP and I've been able to pick his brains on technical stuff. This also ties in with my interest in Long Meadow Cable TV, which is very important to the town of Long Meadow.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, hearing none.
Mr. Mr. Maritz has a question.
Oh, okay. Uh yes, Fred, I'm in your contract with um Comcast. And if if before, before we're all said and done and and put away, the concept of competition in the cable but is that, is that ever, in your, in your um opinion and expertise dealing with this, is is that a possibility at some point in time that hey, I don't want, I don't want this, I want Spectrum, I want somebody else? Is that, is that, is that just my pipe dream?
Um that's a difficult question to answer because I was not in on the negotiations with Comcast for this upcoming contract. Um can you get dish in this area? I believe you dish up on my roof. Um the other thing that's happening is people are dropping cable itself and going with uh their Roku to access um all the different channels through that.
Steve, if I could just answer the question, we've gone through this and the cost of the infrastructure would keep somebody like Spectrum from rewiring or Verizon files. So those, you know, if you live in a big city, they'll you know, they've got five cables running up and down the street. You can pick from five suppliers. But in Long Meadow, the capital costs are just ridiculously high and at this point, nobody's chosen to move into our our town beside Comcast. And that was a, if you recall, a media one, you know, old system that they that they bought back twenty years ago.
You know, in many towns, actually, you have a choice of cable companies if you're around.
Half them or half of them now? Sure. I mean, you go to Boston.
Well, then, but like in Western Mass and Springfield.
No, Western Mass, no, because they're too far. You go with high density, there's probably two or three cable companies going down down the streets. But, you know, you gotta get somebody to invest, pick a number, five hundred million dollars or something to play cable throughout Long Meadow. Not likely to happen for a fraction of the of a decline in the market.
Uh any other questions? Continue to be interested in looking for reappointment. We'll let you know in a couple of weeks.
Uh thank you very much, Steve.
And next we got Tim Casey for Historic District Commission for a three-year term under twenty-four. Tim, you can start with your name and address.
Yeah, Tim Casey, seven forty-one Laurel Street. Uh I am seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission. Uh I'm currently the chair of the commission. Uh I really do uh enjoy uh serving on the commission. I think we've the group has done a great job of working through the difficulties of COVID. Um it's, it's before COVID, we were very much a a group that was used to going out and seeing things, having uh, you know, actual demonstrations and 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 having a discussion in a room. Uh the group did a great job of leveraging technology and working with residents who were also fantastic as well um to allow us to continue uh our mission of historic preservation, albeit via Zoom. So I think uh I enjoy serving and I think that uh I'm looking forward to going back to a more normal uh world with the rest of the group.
Okay, good. And now, is this your? And now, is this your first reappointment or your second?
This is my first. So, uh, for those that don't know, this is my second. This will be my second consecutive term. So we are term limited. So I will, after, if I select or chooses to reappoint me, um, this will be, uh, my, uh, last term. I cannot have three consecutive terms.
Okay. Steve, Mark Gold, you're muted. Um, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, Tim, we have, you know, you know more than I do about this stuff. Historic District Commission has categories for its, its members. Where do you fall all and where are we short?
Um, so, this is a great question, Mark. Um, right now, um, we are actually full, um, in terms of the number of members. Where we're short is in terms of the, uh, types of members. We are short architects and we are short a lawyer. Um, we otherwise have a member of the, uh, Historical Society, which is me, and we also have, uh, two realtors, actually. We only need one, but we have two. So, um, we are, the architect and lawyer are where we are short and we could definitely use them. I, I, I will say that would be a nice addition if possible.
That's your job in twenty years to recruit an architect and a lawyer, I guess, right?
Hey, I, I've been trying. And listen, there's a lawyer out there that I've been trying to get on. He knows who he is and he, you know, and.
Well, let's, let's publicly shame him. Come on.
No, no, we'll not. But, you know, I, I can't, I can't force him to turn in the application. I can't. But, no.
Yeah, thank you.
An architect would, I do not know. And if anyone does, please, we'd love to have you.
That's good. Well, there should be some architects in town. I, I, I didn't ever see any shingles hanging from, that's for sure. All right, Tim. Any other questions for Mr. Casey? Um, good, I'm glad that you've had a good experience and you want to be reappointed. I will let you know in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, guys.
And Andrew.
There we are.
There, okay, you start with your name and your.
And the spiel, okay. Yeah. Uh, so I'm Andrew Berkey. Um, I live at thirty-two Williston Drive and I am seeking reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, this would be my, uh, I guess, first reappointment. Um, I have had a wonderful time over the last three years. Um, I am the current vice chair of the committee. Um, and, uh, it has been an eventful three years, uh, for the Parks Department. Um, when I joined, our institutional knowledge was, uh, uh, among other things, um, largely locked up with Jim Russell. Um, and we were, uh, sad to transition away from him when he passed. Um, and in that time, we've also done everything from getting the Wolf Swamp Field Project off the ground, uh, to smaller projects like thinking about, uh, turning on the lights at Blinn. Um, uh, was, uh, suggested by some town members and, um, we had, uh, a good time considering that. Um, to thinking about, uh, exploring a skate park. And so I am the liaison with the, uh, the group that is, uh, currently working through some CPC funding to consider, uh, putting a skate park in town. And if you've looked in the reminder, I think it was a week ago or so, um, there was a really nice article about, uh, skate park interest in not just the local area, but sort of in the US at large. It's a new Olympic sport and, um, and they're anticipating a sort of pickup in interest in that. And we have actually, uh, gotten in our, uh, proposal, uh, I guess, two proposals from our request for proposal. Um, and so we're, we're sorting through those, uh, as we speak, I guess. Um, we've also done some really other neat kind of non-infrastructure style stuff, um, with, uh, spending many of our early spring, kind of late winter meetings, interacting with the, the, I guess, the non-Parks and Rec town or, uh, town sport groups. So by non-Parks and Rec, I mean like, not the track program or the cross-country program or dance, uh, but thinking about baseball and soccer and lacrosse. And, um, we've really, we've thought deeply about how to both sustain old and initiate new conversations with them about, um, their needs and challenges and successes in both kind of programming style stuff, kind of how they think about, uh, providing access to kids in town, but also the, the perpetual challenge, um, which is field space. And the Wolf Swamp Fields both are the cause of and solution to all of our problems on that, uh, front at the moment. Um, and so, uh, those were really good productive meetings. And I think that it was both helpful for us as a board and helpful for the, um, the, uh, the, uh, sport associations as well. And that's, that's a thing I think we'll, we'll deeply think about regularizing in terms of, um, that communication structure. And so I, the, the board is full of wonderful people, um, and I thoroughly enjoy serving on it and I hope I can continue to do so.
Thank you, Andrew. And just to test your historical knowledge, um, because as we get closer to Wolf Swamp Fields, um, being ready, and I mean, I know it's still a long ways off, but, uh, where did that idea initiate? Was it from the community or from the Sports Rec? Testing it.
Yeah, so this is, part of that had started before I joined the board. And so there were a number of CPC proposals that had been kicking around even when I got there, um, that had, uh, begun to morph into a larger proposal that was ultimately taken to town meeting for the, the funding for that. But, uh, my suspicion is that that started not from a town proposal, although it was, much of that was done before I got here.
Yes, I, that's the way I understood it. Because, you know, we, I'm sure at some point people are going to say, well, you know, the town, meaning the town government, like the Select Board and the, like, it came up with this proposal to spend all this money on the fields and, uh, um, in reality, it was residents, like you say, who, they may have heard about this possibility and things grew, but, um, I think it's going to be a good change. I think people will be happy. I'm glad you, you've enjoyed being part of that. Do we have any other questions from the board members? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, thank you, Andrew. We'll let you know in a couple of weeks, all right?
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, good evening. And now, last but not least, Kathy Mullins, uh, looking for reappointment to the Recycling Committee. Uh, she's looking for an associate, one-year term ending in six thirty twenty-two, so. Kathy, are you able to join us? And you're still muted?
Oh, okay. I just had to unmute myself.
Okay, so we start a video too, so you can see what the heck I look like too.
Anyway, seriously, uh, I am Kathy Mullins. I'm at one-two-three Wheel Meadow Drive and I was just appointed last year for my first time with the Cable Commission and I've enjoyed learning about what's going on as far as cable issues. And my interest is in accessibility for users with various disabilities.
Okay, great. Um, good. Does folks have, so maybe you could explain a little more about that in terms of, um, how, you know, recycling, so you're in the Recycling Committee. This is what you're, you're doing, right?
No, this is the Cable Commission.
Oh, well, we, we have been.
That was a, that was a typo. Sorry about that.
The typo, okay. All right. Then, uh, that would make, you know, recycling, it was going to be a stretch. I was trying to figure that one out.
Yeah, but my father probably would be beaming down from heaven if I joined the Recycling Commission because I remember my father roughly saying, you better recycle that. And he lectured me about environmental stuff even when I was a little kid.
But there's still time, there's still time. I, anything to make him happy, I'm, I'm for. Father's Day is coming up soon. Um, but tonight we're talking about the, um, so how, how did you, what do you mean in terms of making things more accessible? You mean like, uh, there's not a lot of programming for people with hearing. I never see interpreters, I know that.
This is a, a concern of, of availability for closed captioning on various programs. Uh, people who are not only deaf, but people who have, are hard of hearing, benefit greatly from closed captioning. And I'm still kind of concerned that the local programming, the local cable access does not have any kind of captioning. And I think we should be looking into doing something. I know they weren't able to do it for a while, but I'm thinking maybe there's a grant that could be written or something that could be done.
Okay, all right. Well, that sounds promising. Uh, do we, uh, have any other questions from folks on the committee? No, okay. So, uh, so we'll let you know in a couple of weeks, two weeks, about your year and we hope that you'll have such a good experience that you'll want to continue again after this. But, uh, thank you for applying.
I'm very happy. Thank you for your time and your consideration and I would be honored to continue on with my work with the Cable Commission.
All right, Kathy. Good night.
Good night.
So, that is, uh, quite a list and we'll be doing this again on, um, Wednesday, right? So, we'll continue. Now we, um, move down and, uh, we are finally ready for the, uh, Select Board comments. If we have any comments from the Select Board? Mark Gold.
Thank you. I, I have just a couple of comments. First one is that we, uh, we got an email, all of, I think everybody did, from a town resident talking about, uh, you know, what we might do to alleviate parking, given the, uh, parking of commercial vehicles, given that there are, uh, you know, the bylaw that was, that was modified at, at town meeting, that will ban, you know, commercial parking overnight outside of garages. And I think that's something we ought to consider. I'm not sure we really need a fee structure for it as much as a registration, just to limit it to town residents, but something we might want to consider, especially if we have available space in the old town yard. So I just wanted to kind of put that on people's radars because I think it might be worth, worth talking about. The other thing is that, that I, I went to a seminar that was, and I, I know Paul Sturz was on it, Lynn might have been on it also, about, you know, municipal uses of the federal funds under the ARPA Act. And, uh, that's the, if you will, the, the new National COVID Recovery Act. And interestingly, of, of all the things you can't use it on, one of the things you can use it on is for cap, uh, capital improvements to improve ventilation at schools. We just passed a, a pretty hefty capital expenditure approval for changing the ventilation in Long Meadow High School. And I just think we need to make sure that we keep in mind that, it sounds to me, and I'm clearly an amateur and just got this third hand, that that might be eligible for reimbursement on, with these ARPA funds. It was, uh, you know, it's something the town will spend anyway, so it was appropriate to get the town to appropriate the funds, but we may be able to get it back, uh, pay back to us through these federal funds. And I just wanted to get that on our radar. The third thing I just wanted to comment on is, continue to be concerned about what's going on at the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. Uh, just as a refresher, the one issue that keeps coming up is the, literally hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think the number was over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that the board spent on insurance, medical insurance coverage for a attorney who is not an employee, was somebody who was actually hired as a, as a, um, contract attorney. That was clearly counter to state law and, you know, and, and should not have been done. And I think those funds ought to be recovered by the Hampton County Retirement Board. And I'd like to suggest and, you know, have an informal discussion and I'm not going to bring it through a vote, but that having discussions with a couple of the other towns, that we go through our town council and see if the pursuit of recovery of those funds is appropriate, you know? And, and where would you recover it? You know, clearly the, in the County Retirement Board should, if they don't have Directors and Officers Insurance, which is intended to recover from improper decision, decisions that cost the organization money. And this was, this wasn't a ten thousand dollar mistake, it wasn't a ten dollar mistake. It was hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the recovery of that would go a long way toward lowering the cost to the towns of providing, uh, you know, payment that we have to the Hampton County Retirement Board. So I just wanted to make that as a comment, probably see if anybody else thinks that we ought to chase it down, talk to Lynn, probably talk to our town council. But once we get some opinions from those, we'll probably bring it back to the board to see if it's worth us pursuing. Clearly, it's something that has to be done formally as a pursuit of recovered of ill-spent funds. So I just wanted to make those three comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Any other board comments? Steve, we're ends.
Uh, yes, well, I'll move from Mark's, um, pretty highbrow issues to my suggestion to the board based on the fact that we, what did we do? Fifteen interviews tonight? We're doing fifteen interviews on Wednesday that we might in the future somehow figure out how to stagger appointments so that it all, all come due at the same time. Um, in terms of all these appointments to committees, since, since it's too, not full for two meetings, I suggest we might want to think about another way to, uh, fulfill our appointments without all putting in at the end of, uh, the fifth year. That may not be possible, but a suggestion that I think we might want to think about.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I guess I will make a, a comment. I, I was recently asked a question about, um, what are the most important issues in town? And I came to realize that a really big issue is that we have five buildings that we need to make decisions on in the next year, I don't know how many years, you know, five to seven years. Uh, we need to make decisions about the middle schools, uh, Williams and Glenbrook, going to, you know, refurbish those buildings so they could be made into practical classrooms, uh, for the new millennium. Are we going to demolish one or both? Are we going to rebuild? Um, and those are really important decisions the town's going to make. We have, uh, memoriments, uh, we have some, uh, later in the meeting, we're going to talk about trying to apply the state for funding to, to deal with those two buildings. We also have two other buildings. We have Town Hall, which really has wheelchair accessibility to one floor. And then we have a Meeting House, which has wheelchair accessibility to one floor. And we need to have some long-term plans for those historical buildings to figure out how is the town going to better utilize the spaces there? And make some pretty hard decisions about those two buildings because they, um, you know, we've done, uh, some work on them, but there's more work to be done if we want to make them accessible and, and have all the departments fully accessible to, to the, to the public. And then the last one is the Greenwood, uh, building now that the senior services have moved, uh, you know, and are basically moved into the new adult center. We'll need to figure out those buildings. And, and these are big challenges before the town. And when we look at, uh, making these decisions, it's, it's going to take everyone in town, uh, putting on their thinking caps and looking at our alternatives. It, it's going to put a lot of pressure on the town manager, of course, because she has to allocate these spaces and she's responsible for, uh, assets of the town. And, um, I have confidence in her ability and I, I know that the school committees will be involved in two of these big decisions. And, uh, you know, it isn't, these five buildings, something you need to keep on the horizon for the future because we're going to have to make some, some hard calls on what we're going to do and when we're going to do it and have a plan that makes sense for our town. And that's it. So the next thing we would go to would be the town manager's report. Lynn assignments.
Thank you. Uh, so COVID nineteen update, Chief Dearborn alluded to this in his update. Uh, so town offices have reopened. Uh, they started serving the public again in person on June first. Uh, this is Town Hall, Community House and DPW. Satellite offices at the Community House have ceased operation. Stores Library has reopened. New signage is in place and, um, masks are necessary for unvaccinated individuals entering the building per the state's advisory. And we do ask that social distancing continue to be maintained. Masks are not required for unvaccin, or, I'm sorry, masks are not required for vaccinated individuals entering the public buildings. Uh, we have over sixty percent vaccination rate in town. And the adult center will remain closed to in-person programming as well as veteran services. But residents should feel free to stop by or, um, call and make an appointment if you do need, uh, some assistance in either of those locations. Staff are there during business hours, we're just not going to be planning programming right now. Remote and in-person meetings. So this, this is one I'm watching closely because it will change the way we're, um, all operating. Remote and in-person meetings. So this, this is one I'm watching closely because it will change the way we're uh all operating. Uh, Governor Baker has filed legislation to allow remote meetings to continue until September first, while permanent changes to the open meeting law are worked on. Remote participation was allowed prior to COVID, but it did require a quorum of members to be present in person and have the chair present as well. Uh, if legislation is not acted on by June fifteenth, we're going to need to resume all in-person boarding committee meetings. And we will likely be also adding a remote participation component moving forward uh for those in-person meetings as well. We're going to uh keep following this and provide updated information as soon as possible. Once we do start meeting in person again, we will no longer be using the fire station meeting room or the police station meeting room for in-person public meetings. It poses some public safety challenges there, so we will keep those buildings uh left for public safety use only. And I'm working for, working on a new system for reserving boarding committee meetings and identifying the meeting space that we use uh now that we will not use police or fire meeting rooms. The American Rescue Plan Act, we've just recently received some information on this over the last week and a half. And uh what our funds um allocation is, which is um one point six billion dollars. It's less than we thought, but we've also learned that the county received a uh dispersment and some of that is earmarked for Long Meadow, so we're getting the totals there. I'm going to develop a process uh for department heads to use to submit proposals for use of funds. And myself and the new finance director will then come up with a priority list uh for use of those funds. There's significant reporting requirements that will be in place through twenty twenty four, so we're gonna keep that in mind however the funds um are vested to be used. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department's been very busy building out camp enrollment and hiring staff accordingly. Luckily, we've filled almost all the camp positions and we're not experiencing the same level of hiring issues that we have for the pools. Did talk about this in my update earlier, uh but we did uh need thirty positions for the pools and we've only received thirteen applications. We did uh recruitment online uh via local media outlets, Mass Live, at the high school, at area colleges, swim team, yacht club, et cetera. It's been a nationwide problem. And Glenbrook Irrigation, Omasda Landscaping was selected as the contractor for Glen, the Glenbrook, Glenbrook Irrigation Project. This was an F Y twenty one capital project that was funded at the June twenty-third, twenty twenty town meeting for fifty thousand dollars. COVID last year pushed this project forward to this year and late February, the specs were sent out. And we um used someone off the state's contract and we have selected um Omasda Landscaping, the contract amount is for sixteen thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. Substantial sections of the field will be disturbed by the renovations, so we're waiting for a break between the end of the spring sports and the start of the fall sports to undertake that work. Uh, I announced in announcements, the D P W grand opening will be June twenty-fourth at two o'clock. And uh we will have a ribbon-cutting speaking uh program and guided towards the facility. And we anticipate a grand opening for the adult center for sometime late July, early August, but a date has not been determined yet. Staffing update, we received a resignation from the clerk, a clerk at the D P W. This now leaves both administrative positions vacant at the D P W. Get a temp that started today, uh but we will be trying to permanently fill uh one of those positions while the other one we will likely leave vacant to, while we undertake the organizational study. The uh, the new positions that were funded in the F Y twenty-two budget have, have been and will be advertised. This includes the assistant town manager, the full-time clerk at the Council on Aging, two custodians and a grounds laborer. There's a vacancy in the police department we're trying to fill and we've just reposted that. There are two firefighter, paramedic vacancies we are actively interviewing for. The public health nurse job was recently reposted reflecting the increase in hours to forty and the addition, and adding the additional communities for that shift services. Uh, we still have a vacancy for the school age aftercare coordinator, which is a position that we're actively interviewing for now. We will be posting the daycare positions by the middle of this month, we start the program, and the new finance director started today. Um, the yard waste brush hauling contract uh covering May of this year through May of next year was just signed. It represents an increase of approximately seventy-five percent cost due to the large amount of storm debris we've collected over twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. The totals that were provided to the contractor were what were used to give us the sentiment. And uh better inform on what our overall costs are for storm cleanup. Uh, the new contract has not to exceed amount of forty thousand dollars, so it's trying to better accurately analyze for us on what we may see over the next year if we have storm damage again. Crosswalk and stop bar painting. Markings Inc. of Pembroke, Mass was selected as the contractor for this stop bar crosswalk and symbol painting. Uh, this is a contract amount, twenty-three thousand dollars. The work will be starting very soon and will be completed by July thirty-first. And a line painting will be put out um later this summer for that work to happen in the late summer, early fall. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions, any comments on the board? Okay, we did have one question. I don't know if there's been any complaints. Someone had said that the, the running track at the high school is developing some large cracks. And I just, would that be the responsibility of the town or the person who or the company that put it in? It's, my understanding it should be about five years old, is that?
I'll have to look into it. I haven't heard that, so I'll have to look into it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Alright, so we will move on. We've done the public hearings and we move to business. And the first is uh approving the minutes from April seventeenth regular meeting. Uh, hopefully folks have had a chance to look those over and uh
I'll move, we approve the minutes of the April seventeenth regular meeting.
Okay, in a second.
Second, but I do have a point, I believe, on the uh headings of the uh, who was, who was present. I think Mark Strange's name was let up. He, he noted he was there, but not, it's actually on who attended the meeting. Might be wrong, but that's what I read in the minutes. His name was not there.
Okay, I'll look, I'll look into that. That might just be a minor typo on my end.
Okay, good.
I'll add a second.
Alright, and then the second, so that with that adjustment, um, okay, so uh we'll do a roll call vote for uh approval, um, Mike Barberi.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Now we'll look at the uh election warrant. Been given that to, we have to authorize the annual town election warrant for the election, which should be held on June twenty-second at the Long Meadow Community House. And we have positions for the moderator, uh two, one moderator, two select board members, two school committee members and one planning board member. Do we have a motion to accept this warrant?
Well, I'll, I'll, uh, election for that.
Okay. So, and then our second, you know, uh, alright. I guess we should have a formal second. I don't know, I, I, I think Steve Marantz.
I heard, I heard Mr. Marantz seconded it.
Okay, alright. So we'll do a vote on this, um, Michael?
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Strange, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Alright, so next we have a, for new business, we have a special permit request.
Tom, just a point of order. Lynn, do you need, I assume you need people to come in to sign that warrant over the next day or two?
Well, I can do it um via the signatures that I've been using, but, I mean, we haven't discussed that yet. I was just gonna use electronic signatures until we go back into person later this month.
Alright, so uh as I am on the agenda and I click on this special permit request, I'm not getting to the PDF. I don't know if other people have had that trouble. You got it? Okay. Alright, so um so Mr. Gibson of forty-seven Ridge Road is an approval from the board. And um is he going to speak to this request?
Yep, I just moved him in as a catalyst.
Okay.
Let, let me ask you something, Tom, just one minute. I, we, I don't recall that we've ever had a request before this board to approve a construction container dumpster. Why is this before the board?
Cause it's gonna be on the street rather than on his driveway?
Okay, it just said in front of his house. I didn't realize it was, okay, so it's actually on the street. Okay, I, I didn't pick that up.
It's gonna block the street for some period of time, that's how I read it. And then is, is that what?
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
In the past, they've been on the driveways and for that it's just the building permit kinda thing. Now it's a
You know, it just said, okay, it just says in front of his house. It doesn't say it's on the street.
Yeah, alright. So, um, Mr. Gibson, do you wanna speak to the board or call later? And you're still muted, so you may stay out.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, yeah, the, the purpose of this is because the driveway is so steep and because the lot itself is so steep that one of those trucks can't get up the driveway without doing significant damage to the driveway as well as the road. And I just don't wanna go down that whole thing of the, of the road getting torn up and the driveway being torn up by this thing. And um I'm having a real trouble finding anyone to haul off the debris from my um from my renovation. And so I just thought, well, I'm gonna take things into my own hand. I spoke with the building commi- commissioner, who, he directed me to the police department and then they directed me to you all. And so that's where I am at, at this point. But it's just, like I say, it's just for about about five days to a week. Um, and it's just to clear out all this debris that, that's been generated from this renovation. And to be fair, I'll probably need to do it again in September because I'm replacing all the windows in the house. And the house has something like forty windows. So, so i- it's gonna be, a- and it'll be just another short-term thing. It's not, I'm not looking for a long-term thing. I just want to get, get this, the thing here, load it up and get it out.
Tom, I, I think Tom's frozen.
Sorry, can you hear me?
No, I, I think either that or mine's frozen. Tom, Tom's frozen. Yeah, Mr. Gibson, I have a question. This is Mark Gold. While we get Tom back on the line. My question is, is, do you, eh, what can we do? Cause I, I drove down your street when, after I got this, just at night, it's kinda dark there. You know, I hate to think that cars are gonna be coming down the street, there's a curve there, and come right up to this dumpster. Is there anything that we can do to put reflectors on, cones around it, do something to make it a little bit more visible or noticeable?
Yes, absolutely. I'm, I'm happy to do whatever this elected com- committee will ask of me to do. Um, you know, to, to, to uh, 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 help make it safer and, and more visible. Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what it is, but, but clearly if we just put a, put a dumpster out there, I mean, I'm looking out my window now. My street's pretty dark too. Cause it, these streets only don't have reflectors, they don't have any of that stuff. I think we need to put some kind of cones, put reflective tape on it, whatever you can do to get cars to notice it i- at night. That's the purpose. The other thing
Yeah, I, I, I can, I can definitely do that. Um, but in fairness, there are a street, there's a street uh, uh next door to me and then there's another one, two houses down to the, the south. So, um, provided it's a, a bright color, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. But yeah, I'm happy to put reflective tape and cones or whatever you all need.
Right. Lynn, also, can we get the, the traffic officer or somebody to just, you know, if we deem to approve this, just to take a look and see if they've, they've got any recommendations from their perspective that, that we might not otherwise have. I mean, I wanna accommodate our, our residents as best we can, but we gotta keep the streets safe.
Sure.
Uh, good, good point, Mark. You guys can all hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, if there was a truck parked on the road, we'd wanna have reflections and um those little red triangles and so forth, so, uh, good thinking.
Sure.
Any other questions?
No, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, well, I have Steve Marantz as a question. I, I, I have two questions. One, so that's, that's obstruction. And two
It will, it will be, it's not blocking the total street, it's gonna be blocking part of one of the lanes.
So basically, if, if one car is coming one direction, one car is coming another, someone's gonna have to give right away.
Yeah, but the way, the way the street curves, then it wouldn't be, it, it's not gonna be creating a blind curve because of the way this, the ridge road uh curves, you can see from the other direction.
And have your neighbors uh been apprised and signed off on this?
I have spoken with them and no one seems to have a problem with it.
It's not a requirement for signatures uh for, on a permit from residents, from neighbors.
I know, but I
Okay. Any other questions?
Tom, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for a dumpster at, at, uh, at, uh,
Forty-seven Ridge.
Four, forty-seven Ridge, Ridge Road, is that it?
Yep.
For, for up to sev- for up to seven days contingent upon having appropriate reflectors and or uh nighttime warning systems and any specifics that the town's uh traffic officers may require as well.
Okay, uh, do you think seven days needs to be? I, I don't know. I mean, construction, sometimes you can have a change and I, I almost think we should give it at least ten days. I don't know. I mean, just cause it, it isn't the property owner's choice of how long it takes. I mean, he can he probably, he will get it done as quickly as possible, it sounds like, but I almost wonder if we should make it a ten-day thing, just to make sure that there's no hitch and he, there wouldn't be any complications in terms of enforcing.
Does anybody else have concerns about that? I will just comment that, that I replaced the windows in my house and what I did is I took out a whole bunch of windows and I stacked them all up. And they brought in a dumpster, filled it, took it away all in the same day. So this, I've got a lot of windows kinda thing, isn't necessarily required dumpster for a week.
How many, how many days did he ask for?
Yeah, so five days to a week.
Yeah, I think the seven days is fine.
And if I might add, um, it's, it's construction debris that I've generated, but there's also a lot of debris from the yard because um I bought the house from the original owners and they had never touched the house. And so the backyard was like a jungle back there. And so I've been systematically here clearing it out. And I've, I've had probably, I don't know, probably fifty, sixty yards of yard debris taken away so far. But with COVID and with everything else going on, I can't seem to get anyone to get out here to do that work anymore. And so I'm having to do a lot of it myself.
Yeah.
And so as far as loading up that container, I'm gonna be doing a lot of that myself.
Yeah, if you have some days of ninety-degree weather or rain, heavy rain, I, I just think I'd like you to consider giving at least a ten-day window.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Um, I will add, I'm, I'm originally from Texas, so hot weather, it's not that big of a deal.
You won't have to worry about hot weather. Well, that's good.
Thank goodness, yeah.
Alright, so Mark, would you be willing to make that amendment?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with it. I just, you know, it's a thirty-yard dumpster, you can fill it in two days. You know, so, you know, give him seven is plenty, but I, if nobody else objects, I'm certainly not gonna hold it up for three days. You know, I'm more concerned about something parked on the street, picking up a lane in the street for, for ten days. You know, if we can make this work, let's make it work.
Yeah, if we can get adequate, um, you know, uh, safety protection, you know, so people driving down the street will be safe. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I, I will second that motion. Um, and why don't we take it? Is there any further discussion before vote?
Not for me.
None. Uh, Mike Barberi, will you call for a roll call vote for motion?
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Alright. Good luck with your project.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Our next order of business is the emergency declaration, um, which we made in the town of Long Meadow and we would need to take a vote to rescind this. And this was started on March sixteenth, twenty twenty. And, um, so is there any special motion we need to use language in terms of?
Yeah, I, I move we repeal the special emergency declaration of March sixteen, twenty twenty.
Okay, and a second?
Second, that was good, that was good modified language.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Alright then, let's take a vote, Mike?
Mr. Lekusa?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yeah.
Alright, and the middle school's statement of interest, we have, uh, Assistant Superintendent Tom Mazza with us and he sent us, uh, the agenda for the, for the school committee. Mr. Mazza?
Good evening, uh, and thank you for having me tonight. Uh, the superintendent apologizes that, uh, he couldn't join you tonight, he had a, a conflict, uh, for a prior commitment. So as, uh, has, has happened the previous four or five years, uh, we are here looking for your approval to submit a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority for Glenbrook and Williams Middle School. Um, the documents that you have in your packet tonight are updated, uh, from previous years and identify many of the challenges that we face with, uh, two middle schools. Uh, just today, we had to have a half-day at Glenbrook because of the high temperatures and humidity. Uh, we just felt that for the safety of the students and staff, that, uh, it was probably best to not keep them there all day. And again, due to the lack of air conditioning at that building, uh, we just felt that it wouldn't be safe for them to be there. Um, the, the documents are updated with, uh, the Colliers Report that the superintendent presented to you last week identifying over thirty million dollars in maintenance and repairs that are necessary. Um, but even with that type of investment, it still wouldn't provide for updated, uh, twenty-first century buildings. It would, it would only bring them up to code, uh, wouldn't address the sh- the interior structure of the buildings in terms of class size, which we are limited in, uh, space in our science rooms. We have some handicapped accessibility issues specifically at William, uh, at Glenbrook with no, uh, no elevator for students to move up and down the levels. Um, so, so again, we just, we're here looking for your approval to, uh, to move forward with the process as we've done in previous years and hopefully we'll, we'll get invited to participate in the MSBA's core, uh, core project program this time around. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have in regards to, uh, to the SOIs.
Okay, any questions?
Oh, Steve, go ahead, Steve.
Steve.
Um, in, in terms of what the state can respond, this is, we're talking about two, two projects, two schools. Uh, would this in any way, um, hinder the fact that maybe we want one middle school as opposed to two?
It would not, um, if we were selected, we would go through a feasibility process of looking at both buildings to determine what is the best avenue, whether it be renovation, new construction, combining and building only one building to house, uh, the projected enrollment for us to come. So it would in no way prevent us from looking that as a possible option down the road.
Okay, thank you, um, Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanna reiterate something I think I said two years ago when this came up again and the wording was deleted from last year's submission, but it's back in this year. And it specifically says the replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren. Now, I understand that's wording from the MSBA, but I think that's a pretty serious note to put into our MSBA submission and, and, you know, it potentially opens up to a lot of liability. If something happens and saying, hey, you knew this, this building was seriously structurally unsound. If we believe that, Tom, this isn't a discussion to you, it's a discussion to the, to the town, it's the select boards, the school committee. The schools need to be shut down, you can't have kids walking into a building every day that you believe is quote seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren. And, and I object to those words. So just as a performer, I'm gonna vote against this as I did two years ago, not because I don't think we should have an SOI, I think we should. Think it's important for us to do this, but we can't be writing documents like this and, and, and saying that to our parents that the schools are structurally unsafe. Our schools are old, our schools need help, the schools don't have good HVAC systems, but they're not structurally unsafe and they don't jeopardize the health and safety of our schoolchildren. If they did, we would take action immediately, so I just wanted to go on the record as saying that because I think it's a, it's a misstatement of the way things are, were, are written here. I also had, wanted to make a quick comment because this is actually a big deal for the town, that, that, uh, you know, we've asked, and I've asked, I asked the last time the superintendent was here, does the school committee have a plan B? I mean, this has been six years, seven years that these have been rejected? You know, we just gonna keep submitting them and keep working on the same old buildings? You know, we need a plan B, the school committee needs to pro- provide a plan B. And if, if they're not gonna do that, just let us know because I think the select board would step in to do it. Something needs to be done. Because, you know, you know, Albert Einstein's definition of insanity, that's where we are, we're doing the same thing over and over again. Yeah, we went out and got a, a new Collier study, same submission, who knows what's gonna happen, that's my piece, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, uh, any other comments?
Well, I, I wanna hear what Tom has to say about, is it true? Is, are, are the schoolchildren walking into those buildings, uh, subject to risk every day they do that? And if that's the case, then, you know, and if it's not the case, those words should be taken out. If it is the case, we need to do something sooner as opposed to later, but I wanna know what Tom thinks about those words.
Well, those aren't necessarily words from the school district, those are, uh, indicators in terms of the, the reasons why we're submitting. I mean, in terms of the structural piece, I mean, obviously there have been some issues related to, uh, Williams in the past, uh, Glenbrook that, you know, were addressed, but in terms of health and safety, I mean, yeah, there, there most certainly are challenges every day that we deal with, whether it be, um, you know, systems-related HVAC, Mark, as you indicated, that can provide for and put students in a, in a position that, you know, isn't the best learning environment. Um, it's one of the three reasons on, for the SOIs that, you know, we select in terms of submitting a document to them, uh, in terms of why. So I, I appreciate your concern, Mark, um, in regards to the language and, um, and in regards to plan B, you know, I think the Colliers Report identified thirty million dollars and, and need for repairs. And the question is, is that gonna be money well-spent down the road for having a building that still doesn't provide us the ability to have the educational opportunity for students? And I understand that we can't keep doing the same thing over and over again. I just don't know that we, we're at a point, and we may get there very soon, where we might have to ask for money to put a new roof in system because it, it can't provide the power needed, uh, to operate the equipment within the building uh, related to both instruction and, uh, the environment. So, so I, I hear you, um, I just, I think we, we've seen progress and we hope to, uh, be successful with the MSBA and, uh, we think that this is the best approach for the community in the long run.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Now, Tom, I have forwarded two articles to the superintendent, I overshare them to the school committee, did you get to see those articles?
I did not, Tom.
Alright, that, that's, I would, I would ask you to take a look at them, uh, because I see you as a key member of this decision-making process. And the articles were about how some schools have decided that they can change the schools that they have. You know, that what schools, you know, teachers and schoolboys need to get together and decide exactly what do they need as a best premier learning environment for their students and middle school students, right? So look at that priority and then look at the number of children you're gonna be serving because it's changing from what it was, uh, you know, ten years ago or twenty years ago. Um, and it talked about, you know, refurbishing and what I, it brought up the idea, um, that maybe there could be some architect who specializes in, in taking buildings and making them more accessible and updating them. Um, he said, you know, he said, yes, you know, look at Center School. He said, that's, you know, an old building, we, we managed to make the, you know, the connection underground, he didn't give any details, but he said, yes. People were very happy with the Center School building, just, you know, maybe that's the plan B that Mark Gold is talking about, is to look at, is there anyone out there who specializes in taking buildings and, you know, meeting the, of our school system, our teachers, our administration, um, by using the building structures we have, maybe putting additions on, adding out waiters, things like that, it may be, it may be the same price, but it also may be less. And it also may allow us to save a lot of time. Uh, this, there could be a lot of good reasons for doing it and as we know, you know, colleges and universities have old buildings and they need to update them because they can't afford to buy, build all new buildings. Um, but, uh, I, you know, I hope you'll look for those articles, I can send them to you, um, to look at. And I hope that the school board would, would take that seriously as, as looking at a, an option B. Um, I, I do plan to support this, um, this motion for the, you know, the statement of in- interest, uh, for the middle schools. Um, and so, is there any other comments? Alright, so we would need a motion to accept the, uh, middle school's statement of interest?
Uh, we don't need a motion, we need the motion precisely submitted, it's a pretty long paragraph or two for people to read.
Yeah, there's, Mark, thank you, there is specific language that the MSBA requires associated to each of the, uh, statement of, statement of interest that we're, uh, we're seeking support on.
And it starts with the word resolved, having convened an open meeting on June seventh, twenty twenty-one. I suppose I can read the motion. Uh, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Long Meadow in accordance with its charter and by laws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one for the Glenbrook Middle School located in one-ten Cambridge Circle, Long Meadow, Mass, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts Building, or Massachusetts School Building Authority. In the future replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternatives exist, replacement and renovation or modernization of school fac- facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs to a school facility. Replacement or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further sells specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of the application. The awarding of a, a grant or any other funding commitment from Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the town to filing an application for the funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And the motion moved by, and I remove the motion, you look for a second.
Second.
Okay, we are second on the motion, any further discussion?
I, I'm assuming the school committee has, uh, already approved this, Tom?
Right, they met, uh, last week and voted unanimously for both, uh, submissions.
Mm-hmm, good, any other questions or comments? Alright, uh, we will call for a vote, um, Mike Barber, will you do a roll call vote for approval of the motion?
Mr. Lekusa?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, and resolved, having convened an open meeting on June seventh, twenty twenty-one, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Long Meadow in accordance with its charter, by laws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one for the Williams Middle School located at four-ten Williams Street, Long Meadow, Mass, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or addition, eh, to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that submitting this statement of interest form the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of the application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commitments, the town to filing application or funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And I will move this motion.
Alright, thanks.
This was seconded by Steve, um, any further questions? Or you will call, uh, for vote, Mike Barber?
Mr. Lekusa?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, Tom, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Yeah. We're getting to the end here, the audit correction report, Almester's has been waiting patiently. If you wanna explain the report that's been sent to us.
I will fire away, I did see that there was a, a long file that was sent and I'm really only concerned of the first two pages that deal with, um, the FY twenty management letter. The FY twenty management letter was given to the select board back in January where it was initially received and this is kind of just an update of, of so- of some of the things that we've done on the audit findings. Um, there were three audit findings, the first one, part A, dealt with the co-authorization of write-offs of the parks and rec accounts receivables, um, the, the recommendation is to have other people sign off as we do with other departmental accounts receivables as an example. The water and sewer, um, abatement process has, um, not only my signature on it, but it also has Lynn's signature on it. We just wanted to get a, a common practice with the departments. But to date, there have been, um, no recreational accounts receivable write-offs, um, since this originally came out in January to date. So the issue is kinda mute, but I would expect fully if there were write-offs, that the co-authorization would be signed off on. Uh, part B is kind of a two-part process. Um, the Parks and Rec Department uses a system called ActiveNet which does a lot of their, uh, some of their billing, their program, attendance, um, sign-ups and also, um, does some of their collections via, um, credit card and or debit card. And basically what was happening there is that only the net amount of revenues. And basically what was happening there is that only the net amount of revenues. Were being reported to the accounting department, uh, so the gross amounts. Of, of the revenues were not and as such, the gross amount of the expenditures and the cost of act, of ActiveNet were also not reported to us. And as it was discovered, the gross cost of the ActiveNet expenditures exceeded the requirements of the procurement laws. Um, so we are now in the process of going out to the bid in order to make sure that, um. We follow the chapter thirty B process. Uh, again, chapter thirty being the procurement process for this ActiveNet. Type of service, um, whether ActiveNet gets the same kind of, or whether ActiveNet gets the contract or not. We yet to determine, but we will go out to bid and we've also will start, uh, because again, these things are reported as net. The accounting office will start reporting these as gross amounts, uh. The net effect will be a net zero, but we will just be reporting the full amount of the revenues. And simultaneously the full amount of the expenditures and, uh, as I said, we will be looking to do, uh, put out an RFP on that ActiveNet system. Finding number two dealt with a recommendation by the, uh, auditor that we look at our, our bonding levels. Uh, specifically for the treasurer, the assistant treasurer, uh, treasurer collector, the assistant treasurer collector and town clerk. Um, I did look at the statutes, uh, concerning, uh, the levels of bonding. Uh, and they, they basically correlate with the amount of money that's being handled by those departments. And, um, our level of insurance, it directly correlates with those, with those, uh, dollar amounts that are found in the statute. So everything was found to be in place with regard to finding number two. Um, and the last, actually, there's, um. Two B. Yeah, two B, uh, dealt with. Um, it hasn't been a problem in, in the recent, um, times, but in the past, we've had. Certain orgi- organization quasi-community organizations that would use the, uh, tax ID number of the town. For, I don't want to say for their benefit, but they did not go out and seek their own tax ID number. Um, a- and, and so we, what the auditors have recommended and we're in the process of actually doing it now. Uh, the current treasurer, I asked her to look into this and she comes right on it. Um, is to get a listing from the banks of all the accounts. That are using our tax ID and, and match those up with the, with the, with the records that she has for accounts. And just to see, um, if there are any of these quasi-organizations or anything like that on there. To date, there was one that was in question. It dealt with a developer's contract. Um, it, that had put down some money that I think she is reviewing now. To see if that money needs to go back to the developer, but they put it down as, as kind of a bond matter. Um, but that's the only one to date that has been kind of, um, I don't want to even say in question, but. Kind of has maybe fallen through the cracks that it probably should go back to the developer or tax ID number, so. It was kind of a light year for findings, um, I'm sure COVID in the process of the audit had something to do that, but. These were all very light findings that, that came about through the FY twenty audit. And I do not foresee any major problems with any of them. So I would, if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer questions with regard to the audit correction report.
Okay, I have a question, um, in terms of the active net, so prior to active net. The reports that will be sent included the gross amounts?
No, we only got, it, we only were, had reported to us the net amount of the revenues. So if somebody had a, a hundred dollar program fee, an active net was taken. You know, let's say five dollars of that, ju- just as an example, the only thing that got reported to the accounting department was a ninety-five dollar revenue. Um, we did not have the full amount of revenue nor did we have the expense recorded.
Okay, so that's really, uh, it isn't so much that the town has changed their practices or anything. Was this really this account?
Right, I mean, a- again, the only thing that it did avoid because of those expenditures were not reported. Um, and they did hit the thresholds for thirty B, it was not a bidding process for, for that type of service. That's all, that's what we're trying to rectify.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions, uh, from the board? All right, so then we probably need to accept this report. I don't know if we need to vote on accepting the report or if we just is, just listening to it would be enough.
Uh, again, I don't think there's any, we, um, there's, there's no vote required. It's up to you folks if you want to go through it as a formality or not. I, uh, but there's no vote required for, for, you know, any reporting to the Department of Revenue or anybody like that, so.
All right, well, in the sake of time, we will just move on and then we'd have our quarterly investment reports.
Yeah, the, the quarterly cash investment report, um, a- again, this is, um, this is for the piece a little bit later than usual. But again, we, we just changed treasurers with the new treasurer, actually beginning after the quarter ended, um. Erica Brunel is doing a marvelous job for us and kind of puts together this report. Um, but as to be expected with the, with the investment policy, there's a number of standards that we, uh, have to follow. Um, all those standards are being met, meaning there's no long-term investment. Um, that exceed a five-year limit, uh, the individual bank accounts do not exceed five million dollars. With the exception of if there are bond eight million dollars. All the banks have a, the highest safety rating, which is a green rating by a rating agency known as Veribank. And all the accounts are fully insured or secured, so. In that regard, we're following all the policy provisions and, and we maintain that. Um, reports that the interest rates remain steadily low and going lower at this point in time for our investments. Um, some examples were provided in the, um, in the cover sheet that was provided to you folks, the text writing. Um, we did begin a lockbox service at the beginning of FY twenty one. Um, the lockbox service is providing or doing a, a large amount of collections for us at this point in time. Uh, four point three million dollars for the quarter ended in, uh, March. Uh, and the quarter prior to that ended in December was three point one, so that lockbox services is. Is providing a, a, you know, a lot of handling and processing for us, um. At the same time, when we don't really have a barometer because we were in the middle of COVID. To see how that will change, um, and with the upcoming year, if people will still utilize that lockbox service, we hope that they will. Um, but again, with, with town hall opening up now, we're just going to monitor that. Um, with that, with those amount being, uh, deposited by the lockbox service. Um, there is a very small amount of interest that is, that the, uh, accounted or the, the invoices. The revenues are deposited into and the treasurer and the assistant treasurer periodically. And, you know, five or six times a month go in there and, and just transfer those money to higher earning, um, interest accounts. And then finally, very quickly, the, the OPEB, um, trust fund that we have. Uh, in the third quarter of the year, we did send over our annual appropriation of five hundred thousand dollars over to the OPEB trust fund. And then we had some residual money that I charged through, um, employee benefit allocations. In tune of about, I think seventeen thousand dollars, so during that quarter, we actually made a deposit of five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Into the account. Um, the, the amount of earnings for the quarter, um, they, they have a, a portfolio of bonds and. And, and stocks and so on and so forth, but the earnings for the quarter were a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Uh, leaving us with a balance at the end of the quarter of, uh, almost four point five million dollars, so. That trust fund is doing very well, um, and I did provide on the very last sheet, uh, it does have some. Um, actually, I take it back. I did not provide the, uh, the rates of return, but. You can, you can just see from the month to date, fiscal year to date and calendar year to date. Um, the amount of, of earnings, um, that the town had received there, um, basically fiscal year to date. We received about seven hundred thousand dollars, um, in earnings. Um, with, you know, again, at, we started off beginning the year with three point two million dollars in the account, so. We've done very well with that account, um, it is a function of the stock market, it is being professionally managed by the. By the, um, the PRIM board over in Boston, um, and we just knock on wood that the, uh. The stock market and then the whole, um, stock market, bond market and all those things that are invested in it just continue to perform well for us. As it will certainly help our unfunded liabilities as we move forward with the OPEB concerns of the town.
Okay, well, cute. And that, uh, figure of five million, we, we need to get about thirty million.
Our, our, our unfunded liability for OPEB is, is in the vicinity. I think it's just south of thirty million dollars.
Okay, great.
So, uh, again, we've started this, we are making pretty good headway for the, you know, again, this. This is maybe only about three years old that we've started putting money in here like this.
That's, that's a big progress. That's great. I mean, I, you know, I know that, uh, we've had people on the, on the boards, just Richard Foster and Emery. And Mark that, uh, have really helped move this forward. It's, it's, it's great to see that progress. Any questions on the reports? Steve Morantz?
A couple of questions, Paul. The, the five and eight million dollar limits, are those set by the state?
No, they are not set by the state. They're set by an internal policy, um, internal policy.
That's, that's the Long Meadow policy?
The Long Meadow policy, um, and it's probably something I just had the conversation with the, with the treasurer today that. Um, I get the impression that she would like to raise those because we are losing some, being allowed to put. Um, more money in certain banks, um, because we're at the five million dollar limit. And if, and if we had a higher limit, we could be earning a few extra dollars by switching around some balances.
Uh, question, as far as you know, uh, with DIF in the state of Massachusetts. We could have a hundred million dollars in one bank and would be insured. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. The only problem there, because again, it was part of our, our conversation against them too. That how long is it going to take us to get, you know, if we do have a hundred million dollars in with one bank? And it goes under, how long is it going to take us to get that hundred million dollars back?
Well, that would be, that would be a, a problem. It's not gonna happen, but we can do better than five and eight. That's our, that's Long Meadows.
That is our own policy.
That's, that's one question. Secondly, is, what is the difference between? Is there a difference between Adams Savings Bank and Adams Community Savings?
No, they're both the same. It should be known as Adams Community Bank.
Okay, and thirdly, uh, OPEB is that's managed professionally by.
PRIM, the Pension Reserve Investment Management.
Do you have any choice in that or is it, they're just the people who do it?
Uh, through the statute that we've accepted, um, we could have managed it internally with investment. Um, an investment board made up of town. Um, a, a town trust board of trustees, if you want to call the, or we could have just sent it off to PRIM. Um, I thought it would be much easier administratively, quite honestly, to send it off to PRIM. Um, they do not charge large fees, um. But, uh, a- again, it, it's just, to me, it was just so much easier to let them do it as opposed to. Um, professional investors in town. I know they do a great job and everything like that.
I mean, it, it's either local or PRIM. Those are basically the choices.
Correct.
All right, but since PRIM seems to be doing a fine job, like, that seems to be, it's, well, okay, but, okay, questions answered. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Paul, looks good. Thank you very much and, uh, we will move on to our next item. And this is the Mercy Medical System, the rates package that we look at. And, uh, this is from John Dearborn. To, you know, looking at our, our rates and to see how they compare. He has a great chart here showing the, the service level, the fiscal year twenty one. Rates increasing, it's recommended for fiscal year twenty two for, uh. The, the different ambulances that we sent out and, uh, so, does anybody wanna? Oh, Chief Dearborn.
Service, uh, continues to be very viable. We took a little bit of hit revenue this year. To me, the, due to, uh, COVID conditions, which I explained in, in the report. Collection rates, um, continues to be excellent. Ninety-four point seven percent, which is a, um, twelve-month average of collectible revenue. Um, with the Medicare and other adjustments that are in there. Um, we adjusted really one of the call, the service levels. A little bit higher this year. We've experienced a change from basically medical center. They used to provide restocking of some supplies, um. Those supplies are particularly expensive. They are ceasing that practice, so we have to make that up on a, a base of the charge. Um, specifically, some of the action supplies and, and, and tores, just needles, which are over a hundred dollars a use. So, um, we don't use them on every call, be, be specific. So, uh, we changed our practices this year a little bit. We, we've given you just percentage increases. Um, in the past, we actually drilled down a little bit further into the service levels this year and we feel that these are, uh. Look at the, both the regional averages and our, uh, system costs, uh, the, that's what the adjustments were based on.
Okay, great, um, looks good. Mark Gold?
Uh, Chief, thanks for putting this package together. It's pretty, pretty thorough. I guess my question is about the ALS one. Rate increase that's nine percent. Everything else is, oh, pretty understandable, but. Even when you look at the ALS one relative to other communities and other areas, it seems like. You know, I, I just like a little bit more of a, what your thinking process was to that ALS one rate increase.
Yeah, it's really, it's a specific equipment cost or, or, uh, disposable equipment cost that we applied. That we, uh, seventy percent of our calls are at that ALS level. It's, it's the most expensive call level we do.
And, and we charge for the, for the specific equipment to the people that it, that we use it for. We just do it as a. We took you to the hospital on an emergency run, so here's your bill?
You, so we, we do what we call a bundle rate, um, rather than breaking it all down because insurance companies struggle with that. So the, the bundle rate, it makes some assumptions on the types of government that we'll utilize. These are all bundled rates.
So the answer is we don't have itemized bills for this stuff. It's a, it's a one rate. It's all.
They, you're correct, sir.
And, and finally, uh, uh, do we offer? For, lack of an expression, a word, abatements to town residents who say, look, I don't have insurance or insurance doesn't cover it. I'm not. Medicare coverage or whatever. Has that, does that happen at all?
It does. Yeah, I covered that in the report, but, um, it does happen from time to time, um. And, uh, Adrian, who's my assistant here, it's become very, um, insurance literate since she's been in this role. Uh, very often she can help people walk through, um, what benefits they actually have. Um, but in the rare, very rare occasion, we can assist them in that. We do have a, a write-off procedure or a payment procedure. And we also can do payment plans. It happens very rarely, I will tell you. Maybe once a year or twice a year that I get, that we can't actually assist somebody through their insurance or whatever. Again, the Medicare and Medicaid rates are, are capped. We don't build above, above that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Chief, it sounds like your, uh, your helper Adrian, is that what's her name?
Andrea.
Andrea? She's, she's, uh, we don't want to lose her. And these are great rates, uh, you know, I look at ninety-four percent. And basically, you know, uh, the ambulance shows up and they can't look at someone and say, oh, well, we may not be able to help you if you can't pay. I mean, they just say, yes, you know, let's get to work and save this person's life. And to think that, you know, given the fact that, you know, you, you go to help every person who gets a call. To have that kind of return rate is, is pretty impressive, so.
Yeah, we are watching some change, changes to the, um, kind of the changes in the market. Um, during COVID, there's a lot of discussion about being on a bill for what we call assistance calls for non-transports or telemedicine calls. We do, do not have the ability to do that right now, um, statewide. Looks like that's going to change, so, um, moving forward, we will probably have a slight revenue increase. Because we'll be able to bill for telemedicine and, um, assistance calls. We render, uh, medical aid, you know, for example. Diabetic person who has diabetic emergency, we do an on-scene treatment. Um, same with a drug overdose with an arcane treatment. Uh, currently, if they don't, the transport, we cannot bill for those services. There's legislation pending where it allows us to do that, so that'll be, uh, that'll certainly assist with our, our cost operating.
That's good news. That's very good news. Um, and I think this whole, you know, COVID has been. COVID has been a big problem, but there's some silver linings in that, uh, the telehealth and, 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 you know, being able to provide services outside, you know, it'd be great if legislation comes through. It would help you. Is there any other questions for the chief? All right, so, uh, be, because it's a rate, uh, that, you know, a fee sort of change, is this what we need to vote on?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the EMS rates for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two as recommended by Chief Dearborn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Mike Barbier, will you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Uh, rejoining, so I'm allowing, looks like he had some issues, so give him a second.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, I just take two seconds. I just want to take Richard for his service, the board. Uh, Richard, um, my six years as chief, uh, I think you've made me a better man to prepare for my presentations and I just want to thank you for that and thank you for your friendship. So, good luck.
Thank you, John.
Right. So we have, uh, item G, which is the DPU twenty-eighty draft municipal comment letter, which Steve Rantz asked us to put on the agenda to, to look at this letter for review. Um, is there any, well, Steve, why don't you just explain it, give us a quick?
Here, here's my overview. I, I would actually hope, because they did want this letter submitted by the fourteenth, everybody um, bypassed the gold rule and actually voted on this tonight, but let me give a brief, brief, briefly. Twenty-eighty, I will read from the twenty-eighty document what, what this actually is. Uh, this comes from the DPU. The Department of Public Utilities opens this inquiry to examine the role of Massachusetts gas local distribution, distribution companies, i.e. EverSource, in helping the Commonwealth to achieve its twenty-fifty climate goals. Specifically, we will explore strategies to enable the Commonwealth to move into net-zero greenhouse gas emissions energy future while simultaneously safeguarding rate pair interests, ensuring safe, reliable, and cost-effective natural gas service, and potentially recasting the role of local distribution companies in the Commonwealth. Accordingly, based on these developments, the Department determines that it's appropriate open this proceeding with a focus at this time on the local distribution company's role and the Commonwealth's achievements in achieving these twenty-fifty goals. Through this proceeding, the Department will solicit utility and stakeholder input and develop a regulatory guide the evolution of gas distribution industry while providing rate pair protection and helping the Commonwealth achieve its goal of net-zero gas house, greenhouse gas emissions, and energy. So, that's what twenty-eighty is about. This letter, passed by Harvard Law Professor, um, requesting just simply that municipalities, where all the action is gonna happen, as we know, if EverSource decides to go ahead with their gas project, it's gonna go down the street in Long Meadow. We are municipality, we are affected. So to me, um, the most important paragraph of this, of the letter that we actually believe that, that's kind of look at, says, to that end, municipalities, i.e. Long Meadow is one of them, respectfully request that the DPU provide some meaningful opportunities for common throughout this proceeding, including providing input on drafts and follow versions, but any report prepared by consultants in this proceeding. To the extent that there are stakeholder meetings and informal, or informal consultations with consultants, the local distribution companies, DPU or others, the municipalities request to be notified of such conversations and provide an opportunity to participate. What has happened to date is stakeholders have yet to be defined. Uh, they, they have not said who's a stakeholder and who's not. Uh, to me, there's always saying, if you decide that we're stakeholders, please let us know what's going on. And so I think that this is a, it's not saying don't work in, and don't work in, 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 uh, Long Meadow. Has nothing to do with our project specifically. It's a request that we, municipality, we're affected by whatever happens, uh, going on to meet our greenhouse gas emission requirements by state law. And I think this is a completely reasonable letter that says, hey, please, just let the municipalities be part of this. And I think we should vote on it.
Okay, and one of the things that we had talked about was to see if we'd get a review back from, uh, our attorney Canoff, and Lynn, you had submitted a request for him to comment, right?
Yes, I did, yep. Um, and then he did ask some follow-up questions. He wanted to, some more background on the letter, uh, which I did get from Steve. We have forwarded that on to him. He has not had a chance yet to speak with the author, one of the co-authors of the letter. He's supposed to be talking to her tomorrow. He suggested, um, that the board discussed the substance of the letter and its focus on the important role of municipalities in the energy policy debate. He had no, there was no controversy on that point. He felt that the best result would be for the board to defer a decision on signature pending input from council. If the board is determined to move ahead before that happens, he didn't have a strong feeling against signing on to the letter. As long as other cities and towns were supportive of the letter as well.
According to the author of the letter, other cities and towns have signed on. I would be happy to, if we, you get this, since we're meeting again on, in two days, on June ninth, you know, if we can hear from Canoff, I assume advice of counsel is him. Is that correct? If we can hear from him by the time we meet on the ninth, I would, I have no, because the, the date that, um, they want to submit this letter is the fourteenth. Um, if we're gonna get a ninth and, and we can even, we can follow the Mark Gold rule, we can then, um, vote on the ninth on this, if that's acceptable for the, for the group. I, I can, I can agree with that for sure.
And we, all right, so we have a meeting coming up on the ninth. Uh, Marco?
Yeah, I just have a question. I mean, you're right, Steve. The contact, the content of this is pretty generic in terms of specifically what's looking for. The problem is, the format of it isn't, like, I wouldn't know how we write it from Long Meadow. It starts out, you know, on behalf of cities and towns across Massachusetts. I mean, do, you know, we need to cut and paste this and set, put it on Long Meadow letterhead for the ninth, so that, see what it is that we're signing.
Well, my, what you're signing is, it says, yeah, on behalf of, basically, it's gonna be a number. It says, on behalf of twenty-seven cities and towns, sixteen is five hundred and eleven. How many would be? And then I think it's at the end, a lot of the cities and towns have signed on. Everyone is signing on to the same level. A lot of, on behalf of, it's on behalf of a number of towns and cities. I think, so it's fifty-one, that would be unanimous.
But what we're doing is saying, add the town of Long Meadow and our signatures to this master letter that you're gonna submit on behalf of all these towns. In other, we're not really sending this letter. We're approving the OCE clinic to send this and include our, our name on it.
Yes, on behalf of municipalities in the state, yes.
So if, so if, if fifty sign it, it gets fifty names and it says fifty. If five sign it, it gets five names and says five.
Yes.
Ultimately, the letters from them to the department with essentially saying, we endorse the letter.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I didn't understand. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, so basically it's saying, we, we think municipalities should be treated as critical partners and, um, you know, and that we support this, this movement to, um, have cleaner air and, and less pollution and so forth. Uh, any other comments or questions?
Um, if I could, uh, Wednesday's agenda has already been published. The forty-eight hour deadline was today. For, for today.
All right. So.
This is an unanticipated addition to the agenda. Agendas aren't on, s- satirizing. They're our best estimate when the time is issued. Based on tonight's meeting that we deferred something, I think we could put it on the Wednesday agenda.
We're speaking of public notification at this point, Lynn. What do you think?
Uh, if, if you want to move that direction, then, then I'm not gonna stand in your way.
Yeah. And that would give us a couple more days to hear from Canoff to set, you think he'd meet that kind of a Wednesday deadline, or?
I will follow up with him again tomorrow. He's, um, checking with him and see how that conversation went.
Okay. And then, um, I don't know if it's important to even know how many other cities and towns are signing on with this, but, you know, is there any way you could get us an idea of that, Steve, or?
I, I will do the best I can. Um.
Okay. Okay. But, um, it seems pretty straightforward. And then, um, you know, Wednesday, we should have a complete board, I'm hoping to, so, uh, all right, so if that's a consensus, that we will move a vote to Wednesday, would it? Okay, so we'll just have to add that as a, uh, and I, it may be something we have to announce at the beginning of the meeting, Lynn, that there's an adjustment to the agenda. Let's pull out on that. I think we probably should, um, maybe we should take a vote on this, just so we, as a board, if, if, uh, clearly voted as a group to move this agenda item to the next meeting and then we'll take a, a vote on it? Is that, could I have a motion to move it to next meeting?
I'll move.
Okay. Any second?
Second.
Okay. And do a roll call vote, Mike?
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right. That worked out. Thank you. And now we get to, uh, discussion, um, policies for term limits for board and committee chairs. And Richard Foster has to put this on the agenda, so I will turn it over.
Yep. Tom, I'd, I'd request that we postpone this item and move on to the town manager evaluation due to the limit, due to the, the, uh, time at night.
That's fine, won't be?
Before, before we defer this though, Richard, I, I'd just like to make, you know, which I mean, we're not deferring it. I, I, I'll, I'll volunteer to draft a policy for us to review at our next meeting. You know, term limit policy is pretty straightforward and give us something to talk about. Rather than just talk over, you know, concepts. I think we need something concrete.
No, and I agree. I agree totally with you, Mark. I, I think the, in, in essence, our concern is not the fact that we have a chair that, that stays in a committee for seven or eight years. I think my concern is the fact that we don't have a policy that says you will reorganize every two years and, and, or every year or whatever, and at least put it up for public, uh, uh, participation for the chair on these different committees. I mean, we have, we, we have some chairs that have been nine, ten, fifteen, maybe twenty-five years, as chairs on these committees. That, that was my point. It's, uh, you know, we need to make sure that at least the committee is aware the op, the opportunity to reorganize.
So if nobody objects, I'll sit down with Richard and we'll put together a draft or something, so at least when the board meets, they can review something written. I'll have his concepts.
Okay, okay, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in total agreement with that.
All right, so people can think about it and then we'll, we'll take a look at it and we'll do that at our next scheduled meeting? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bye then.
All right, great. Um, and even though it sounds like, you know, Richard is almost off the board, you know, at least we know you'll be at that final meeting too. So we'll look forward to that. Um, so the last thing is the town manager's annual eval, evaluation. Uh, they've been turned in by board members. We've reviewed them in the executive session and we've discussed the, um, town manager's compensation and contract for the, uh, next two, few years. We originally was awarded a three-year contract um, over to the, the board who has a motion to make.
Tom, before we, before I make a motion, I think it's worth, and I know it's a late hour, but it's an important issue. I think it's one of the two most important things we do in town, which is to hire and evaluate a town manager and, and follow up the budget. So I'd like to just make some comments. I think, because people in town who may or may not be listening to this, just for the record, there, there was a performance review that was issued. That was a, the way we do it is the members of the select board write something up, we submit it to their select board or a secretary who just compiles it. There's no editing, no one versus the other, it's just a listing. I was astounded and happy to report that the, that the evaluations were all very, very good, outstanding, I, I might say. And for people at home, we put it together, you know, several years ago, everything from communications, communications, internally communications, externally, management of people, budget preparation, asset management, you know, I can go through the list. But we have these different categories. And the town manager is rated against how, how she did in each of the, each of those categories. And I'm thrilled to, 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 you know, at least to add what I put down, but note that my, my evaluation was identical almost to everybody's else's. And so, Lynn, I'd like to just acknowledge the work you've done, the, how hard you've worked under ridiculous circumstances over the last thirteen or fifteen months, you know, and, and in getting things done, staying on, on track, getting the things accomplished we got accomplished, and doing it all with a phenomenal balance of, of management, you know, internal to your staff, you know, external dealing with the select board, dealing with the people in town, I gotta tell you, that's critically important. And I think everybody on the select board will tell you the feedback we get is extraordinarily positive. So I, Tom, I'm, I'm gonna be prepared to make a motion, but I, I didn't want this just to go to a, oh, it's a, it's a salary review. It's not. It was a top to bottom performance appraisal on a whole bunch of categories. And Lynn, you came out really, really well. And I'm thrilled and I think the town owes you a big debt of gratitude for the work you've done past year, and we look forward to you continuing to do that. I'm gonna defer to anybody else before I make my motion.
Okay, anyone else, um, wanna say anything?
How much time do we have?
Yeah.
No, I, I, I agree with, I, I agree with Mark. I think, uh, our, our town manager was challenged with a once-in-a-lifetime uh, event, and the coordination that took place was phenomenal. Uh, I mean, it's, you know, as I said, my closing remarks are the fact that my evaluation this year was based on my expectations of what a normal town manager would have done uh, in, in his or her first year of service. And they didn't even take into consideration COVID nineteen. And I, and I thought that uh, Lynn's performance was exceptional in, in, in all categories. And, and I, and I cautioned the fact that, you know, evaluations can change from year to year, but based on the fact of her newness to our town and the professional response and how she gathered the team together and how they responded to her leadership in a very positive fashion, that demonstrated more clearly to me that, 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 how, how good a decision the select board had made when they chose her to be our new town manager. I, I just, I'm just thrilled with her, with her, with her attitude and her performance and her acceptance for our community and, and the performance elements. I, you know, I, I'm sure there's something there that we're missing possibly, but, uh, we haven't found it yet.
Oh, we're gonna keep looking, just in case.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
Well, we've, we've, we've had a whole year to look, Mark, and we haven't found it. You know, for this board, that's exceptional.
Any other comments?
Well, I, I must comment since everyone else is, I would say, I, I, I was not on the board at Select Lynn, but excellent job, board, by doing that. And, um, yes, I, I cannot imagine coming to a town under more difficult circumstances than and so, yeah, it's really good news. And, um, you know, hopefully, actually, once we have a normal situation, uh, you know, uh, some significant progress can be made as going forward as opposed to, you know, deal, you know, dealing with problems as opposed to solving some problems, which would be really, I'm sure, a much more rewarding sort of, uh, advance for it. So, but really, you know, great job. And I think, I, you know, uh, your performance reviews, uh, indicate that the board is quite appreciative of what you've done.
Okay. And then I guess I'd just like to say, Lynn, that there's nights when you leave work and you think, oh, that really went well. I hope this is one of those nights where you recognize, we really appreciate you. Um, I don't think the town really- Um, I don't think the town really has had the chance to, to get to know you, uh, the way they would have if, if it wasn't COVID. I, I mean, there'll be a lot more people walking in your office. Maybe that's good that they weren't, for some folks. But I think that even regardless of who walked near office, I think they would appreciate the fact that you're a straight shooter, that you're in everyone's corner. You know, you really don't pick favorites. And I think every member of the board would say that any time they approached you with a question, they, that you were straightforward and you just were trying to do your best. Um, things that town managers never had to deal with. Halloween. I mean, none of the town managers ever even had to deal with Halloween. And all, for you, it's like this huge, like, you know, we had so many emails on that one issue. It was like, you know, it, it was incredible. Um, and you had to, like, put all the pieces together and, and, uh, you know, it just, there were so many issues like that. We are, it should have been simple, but it was a, a bigger challenge. And so we really do appreciate your work. And, uh, but I think it's really important that you walk away from work most nights realizing you're doing a good job and that we really appreciate it. Um, and so, thank you. And Mark, will you go on to the motion?
I have one more comment for, Mark, before you go.
Go ahead, Richard.
I, I think we, I think we would be very remiss if, if we didn't acknowledge, uh, the, the clear outstanding performance that Lynn's team, uh, produced this year. I mean, each team member, this was new for everybody. Nobody had ever been through this. Uh, and she provided wonderful leadership, but she also was able to call on a highly qualified uh, team that was able to adjust and modify procedures and, and reach out and manage her, which was difficult on their behalf too, because they were, they were all new members. And, and they gelled together. So I, I don't think we can ever stop thanking the entire team of, of Long Meadow for how they supported our new town manager and also how our town manager performed to this once-in-a-lifetime occasion. And, and at that, Mark, the motion.
Right, so based on, based on our performance appraisals, Lynn, uh, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we authorize a, a salary increase for Lynn of two-point-two percent, which is consistent with what we've done for our, our town, um, department leadership, uh, plus the cost of living increase that they will also get that will be authored, that was authorized actually at the, at a town meeting. So it's two-point-two percent plus whatever that cost of living increase will be. In addition, we'd like to auth, authorize a, I'm moving, we authorize a bonus of two-thousand-five-hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one for the performance under just amazing conditions for that. And, and, uh, to recognize that, that performance for this year. And finally, uh, I'm recommending and making a motion that we offer Lynn and, and a contract extension through June of twenty-twenty-six. Uh, and the purpose of that is because, uh, too often, the town manager's, you know, tenure is dependent upon the, the whims of a select board and, and the next town election. And, and I don't think that that ought to happen. I think we owe, uh, owe Lynn some additional security behind, beyond what she's gotten so far. And I think this contract extension is another way of showing her that, you know, she's the right person for the job. She's doing the job right. We want to make sure that she's not here at the whim of one or two people who may come in and want to shake things up. So, uh, that's my motion. A two-point-two percent plus the cost of living increase for the, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, a twenty-five-hundred-dollar salary uh, bonus for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and contract extensions through June twenty-twenty.
A second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, Mark, uh, Mike, will you do a, uh, roll call vote?
Mr. Kuzo?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Um, can I, would you, would you give me just a second, Tom?
No way. You walk off into the sunset. The sun is setting. You're right on the horse. No, no, please.
Thank you. I, I truly want to thank you. Not what I was expecting, so thank you very much. I, um, I did read the evaluations as well and, um, I'm, I'm very glad that you're all happy. Um, and I, I have enjoyed working with all of you most of the time. Um, no, it's been great. Um, but I have to really, truly say that none of this would have been possible without the outstanding team that is here in town. And to Richard's point, uh, it, we all gelled really well, really quickly. And I think that the town greatly benefited from that because if it wasn't going well and wasn't smooth, things would have fallen. This team that was in place, I mean, Chief Dearborn, Paul Pasterzik, and the rest of the department heads, it, they just, you couldn't ask for a better team. And I could not have done half of what I did without any of their support. Uh, so I, I do feel like they need to be acknowledged as much as I have in this. But I, I really, truly thank you, um, for this opportunity and, um, for your